Is everyone's phones off? Nothing more embarrassing than the phone going off during the prayer and the pledge. All right, 6 o'clock. I'd like to open the February the 20th meeting of the Union County Board of Commissioners. And we've got a special treat tonight for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance and the national anthem. Well, that's a deviation from what we normally do, but I met with Rick Green and Village Green Band at the Crime Stoppers BBQ. And Rick said, hey, we would like to come up and do the national anthem sometime if you allow people to do that. And I thought that was a great gesture from them and thought it'd be a great treat for the citizens of Union County and would like to thank them for their many years. What did you say, Rick? 20 years y'all been doing that for the Crime Stoppers BBQ? And they've been here for 38 years. I told him they're only like 37, so how could they be together 38 years? But many of us have enjoyed them over the years and I hope that everybody will enjoy there tonight. So if you would come up and start with the prayer and if guys, y'all come up with him. And we'll remain standing. So normally, we sit down after the pledge, so just remain standing with your hand over your heart, okay? So they're gonna start with the prayer first. So if you'll, everybody sit down until they don't pray, then we'll stand for the pledge. Too many moving parts here, Rick.
Yeah, we're gonna pray, we're gonna pray first. First, thank you very much for having us. And so if y'all bow your heads, please. Our most gracious heavenly Father, we come to you thanking you for the blessings that you have given us, thanking you for our county that we live in, thank you for the leadership that we have. We're so blessed to be able to live in Union County. Thank you for our band here tonight and being able to do the national anthem, be with each Commissioner that we make the right choices for our county and make good, sound decisions. In Christ's name we ask, amen. All right, now if we'll all stand, we'll do the pledge of allegiance, if y'all help me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, remain standing, we'll do the national anthem.
(music) Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air? Gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Woo! Thank you very much.
You're gonna need a baseball game.
Play ball? All right, next, we have informal comments. And we have two signed up on the internet and then we have several that have signed up. We'll start with the folks who've signed up on the internet. And that will first start out with Bill Lachlan.
Good evening, Chairman Rushing and members of the Union County Board of Commissioners. My name is Bill Lachlan. I live near Providence and Newtown Roads. I've been a resident of Union County and Marvin for over 13 years. First of all, I want to thank you for your service to our community. Your job can at times be thankless and we would all be remiss if we didn't express our appreciation and recognize your efforts, your energy and your public stewardship. I am here tonight to ask you to deny the application for the regional pump station for the Heritage at Marvin high-density housing development. I submit to you this evening, I've sent it to you by email as well, a petition that was put together back in October, back in the fall, with over 500 area residents who signed it opposing this development and this pump station and this high-density rezoning. This new development will increase the density above the area's standards by a factor of two to three times. This will double or triple the water and sewer demand for this area. For a little bit of background, the Village of Marvin has been pushing to develop this new 125-acre town center dubbed the Marvin Heritage District. It is a mix of high-density housing and commercial development. The first phase is a 47-acre parcel with 68 small lot houses on it. Generally, this area is zoned to have lots of 20,000 to 30,000 square feet. This development cuts that in about a third or a half to 10,000 or 11,000 square feet, quarter acre lots, five yard setbacks. Ironically, this property was originally designed and submitted with 29 homes on it with very little, well, with a great deal of support. Now it is being resubmitted with more than twice that amount. We are concerned that the water and sewer infrastructure, roads, schools and schools will not be able to keep up with the, with high-density rezonings such as this and that if this first phase moves forward, it'll set precedent for the next phase and the next development and so on. There will be no turning back. Recently, the Village of Marvin developed a new branding tagline called enriched by nature. Welcome to Marvin, we are enriched by nature. If this regional pump station is approved tonight, I would like to suggest that tagline be revised to the Village of Marvin, enriched by increased density. Please deny this application for this pump station. Thank you.
And I apologize, Mr. Lachlan, I saw where you requested to be at last. They just gave it to me.
That's fine, that's fine, no worries.
I apologize. All right, next, we have Scott Stone.
Good evening. My name's Scott Stone. I am just an engineer, but I'm here representing a large number of Union County stakeholders. These stakeholders represent hundreds of millions of dollars' worth of investment in Union County. We are here tonight to offer three solutions to help address the sewer capacity crisis. I provided the clerk with a signed petition and supporting data which highlight these solutions and I've sent them to you as well in email. So three solutions. Number one, you have an existing contract with the city of Charlotte for sewer. Use it, open the flow, open the valve. You can send sewer flow to Charlotte's McAlpine Creek Plant today, up to 2 million gallons a day. If you agree to use that contract, if you're actually willing to send the flow to Charlotte through existing pipes, existing pumps, you add 2 million gallons a day to your current available capacity in 12 Mile Creek Basin. You go from 7.5 million gallons a day to 9.5 million gallons a day and you do that immediately. Well, wait a minute. Now, is that an expensive option? Because that's what some people have said and what the rumors are. Well, here's the actual numbers. Charlotte charges you $2.46 to treat your sewer. You charge your ratepayers $8.55. You've still got a huge margin in there for profit. And it actually might be cheaper to send it there because you don't have the capital costs and the debt service that would go with getting an extra million and a half to 2 million gallons of capacity. Number two, expand the 12 Mile Creek Plant and expand it with some urgency. You've already planned ahead. The plant was planned and built for expansion. The more you expand that plant, the more cost effective it becomes. The layout provides for expansion room, which is less for construction costs. So expanding the plant up to 9 million gallons a day as soon as possible could actually save money for your existing ratepayers. Now, you might say that, well, that's already underway, we're already in the design, we're already expanding that. Well, just this week or last week, I've heard that what was supposed to go out for bid this month is actually being delayed and now it won't go out for bid for construction until June. So we've already lost four, four months in the process of something that's desperately needed. And number three, continue to use the system development fees to protect the existing ratepayers. We are not here today to ask that you reduce fees. These fees, which used to be called capacity fees, are incredibly valuable tools to ensure that utilities have the money needed to make the investments in pipes, in treatment, in other infrastructure. We're recommending that you continue to set these rates at a level that protects your existing taxpayers. So let me say that again. Protects your existing taxpayers with using those fees. The cost of expansion should be done by the ones who are doing the expanding. And you get $7,400 per house in terms of capacity fees, which is huge revenue. And these, these are only three options that we're recommending for immediate action. You've got other challenges to face, but they minimize risk, they provide value to your existing taxpayers and they provide you a little bit of runway so that you can evaluate your other needs and gets momentum flowing again in Union County. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next, we have, sorry, Christine Amos. And it's beautiful to state again where you live and your address.
Good evening, Chairman Rushing and esteemed members of the board. I am here tonight, I am the Village of Marvin manager. I'm here because I was requested to express the sentiment of the village council in relation to item number 80, which is the Heritage District. Currently, the Village of Marvin supports any infrastructure development that has a greater impact on the Village of Marvin Heritage District as a whole. If you all are aware, we recently adopted a small area plan to create a downtown corridor. That corridor is called the Heritage District. The application that you have presented before you as number 80, it looks like, on your agenda, is an application to create a pump station. While I can't speak for the development itself, what I can say is that our village council supports any infrastructure that would have a greater impact on the entire district as a whole. And this is our planning and zoning administrator, Hunter Nestor. I'll turn it over to him for a couple of words.
Good evening. Last few things I would like to mention with the Heritage District is that it has been a goal of the Village of Marvin dating back since 2004. It finally started coming to fruition probably 2012, 2013, really started kicking off, get the ball rolling with creating documents, finding a plan, kind of that long-term capital planning that the, for the district. As well as for the specific application tonight, one of the ways that the village tried to ensure kind of capital success as well as the long-term planning of the overall district was one of their conditions of their approval was to ensure future connectivity to their proposed pump station as well as go ahead and secure those easements for surrounding property connectivity. That was one of their conditions, they agreed to it. And so overall, the, this pump station is to, for the betterment of the good of the surrounding properties within the Heritage District.
And if you wouldn't mind, would you state your name and address?
Yes, sir, Hunter Nestor, N-E-S-T-O-R. And do you want my home address or do you want me to just with the village?
Home address.
Home address. It's 16006 Red Buckeye Lane, because I'm Huntersville, NC 28078.
We needed that for the minutes, so.
Yes, sir.
Do you need mine as well?
I think we have yours on here at least, I think. So you're on Mangum School Road?
It's Marvin School Road. I put the Village of Marvin address. My name's Christina Amos. My personal residence is 28, 20886 Ridgecrest Road, Locust, North Carolina.
All right, thank you very much. Next, I have Joe Polino.
Thank you, Chairman Rushing and fellow commissioners. I think I've had the honor of meeting most of you in, in the past briefly. I think CRO TPO with Brian Helms and Melissa. I don't think we've met yet formally. Joe Polino, 1253 Firethorn Club Drive. I'm also the Village of Marvin mayor. I've been the Village of Marvin, the mayor of Marvin for coming up on 10 years now. And I can tell you that we've gone through quite a bit of challenges within our own town and we've tried to address them. But I will also say, saying that, we have some of the tightest ordinances in Marvin throughout the state. So we're basically R40 zoning. More importantly, I believe we're doing the work of what our community wants. We've been challenged a number of times by individuals. I'm not sure where the gentleman before the 500 signatures come from, but that'd be interesting to learn more about that. I also noticed we had the owner and developer here of the area that we're talking about for the pump station things. I'm not here on behalf of them, but I will say, we've done our due diligence in the 10 years. We've changed the zoning, we changed our land use plan. And I will say that we even had a group called CPNI tell us if we're gonna do this Heritage District, which is gonna be a multiple things of mixed use, light commercial and some homes in an area that is basically a cut through for all our other towns that come through that. So we're, we're trying to do a number of things. We did have a unanimous vote on not only this, but I'm also looking at consequences down the road. If this doesn't get done, once it eventually gets done, which I believe it will at some point, then we'd be tearing up the roads most likely. And I, I want to kind of avoid that. But we did have a group tell us what needs to be done in the Village of Marvin as far as rooftops. And we're basically taking the 120 acres and condensing the housing in one area and the rest will be light commercial. So we're moving towards some commercial to, to create a gathering place. At the end of the day, it's not an issue with just Marvin, it's all of Union County. And we formed a group called WUMA, Western Union County Municipal Alliance. We meet monthly. It entails Marvin, Weddington, Stallings, Wesley Chapel, Mineral Springs and Waxon. I will tell you, this is an issue, water and sewer for all of these municipalities. I'm here personally to invite you to the meeting this Thursday at 4 o'clock at Weddington Town Hall. We'd love to see you. It's, it's top priority for all of these communities. We want to know your thoughts on where this is going and how we can plan accordingly to get your support. And we finish without that. So we will look forward to all of you coming. If you have any questions, I'll be around for the vote later, so, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Gary Rose. Did I say that correctly?
Good evening. My name's Gary Rose. I'm at 1209 Lark Ridge Court. Been a Union County resident for over 20 years. I've been in Marvin for over four years. Want to talk on the proposed wastewater you guys will be voting on later today. Wanted to share a couple of surveys my wife did. Now, I'll tell you, they're on next door, which is pretty informal, but she did, that's the way we communicate these days. So she did a survey back in September 3rd of last year. Pretty simple. Are you in favor of high density in Marvin, North Carolina? A village where state lot sizes and horses and hobby farms are the typical? 174 people responded. 82% said no. Marvin is not the right place for high density. When we're talking about this project, it's quarter acre lots, it's high density. Second survey she did, September 10th of last year. Are you in favor of more commercial development in Marvin? 120, 180 people responded. 68% no. When we saw the agenda for tonight's meeting, she did a survey yesterday, roughly 30 hours ago. Question was really simple. On February 20th, the Union County Board of Commissioners will vote on a wastewater pump station that is necessary for the proposed high-density 68-home development on quarter acre lots in the Marvin Heritage District. Are you in favor of this pump station? 30 hours ago, 92 responses. 85% said no. Another survey, the Village of Marvin did a survey, 2019, community survey. One of the responses was, a majority of residents are not in favor of increasing residential density. So in summary, I encourage the commissioners to turn this down for the following reasons. The strain of the extra development, overcrowded schools, roads, police, fire. The proposed list station as currently constructed does not cover the entire Heritage District. The Heritage District is 125 acres. The service area of this proposed in front of you is for 68 acres. So basically, it covers the residential and a little bit more. The future maintenance burden of the station on the county, the county has to pay for. This will set the precedent for future uncontrolled growth. It does not fit the character of Marvin. And the last point is, the people don't want it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Russell Odell.
Russ Odell, 12, excuse me, 2437 Pleasant Union Church Road, Raleigh. So, as far as the, I also was gonna speak on the pump station. And I'd like to emphasize, this is an economic development issue for the Village of Marvin. It's been a number of years in the making. It's an excellent example of what a private-public project would be involving the Village of Marvin, the North Carolina Department of Transportation, the US Department of Transportation, Federal Highway Administration, Union County Public Works, property owners and home building company. And I want to thank you for considering this project. As regards the other comments from the people, two speakers, that's two people out of 6,000 residents and they've spoken at every meeting. And what I would point out is that this body is not considering the density of Marvin. And that's a Village of Marvin decision, it's not up to y'all. But if it was up to y'all, 1.6 houses per acre, it's a 47-acre tract and 68 homes. If you can't do this, then you might as well not do any development in Union County. 68 homes, I mean, there's dozens and dozens and dozens of neighborhoods of that size. I, I just don't, it's kind of like pull up the drawbridge, you know? We, we don't want anything more. We've, we've got here and we don't want anybody else to come in. I really think they ought to be thanking us. If you looked at the whole project, to thank us, we personally donated the land for the roundabout. Which allows them to get on a Newtown road without doing right turns only. They actually get out one of the legs. They ought to thank us for not putting an entrance from the proposed 68-home lots onto the Medlark lane. They ought to be thanking us for a 100-foot buffer around it. So fully wooded lot, 100 foot, they'll never even see what's in there. So it's, it's like, the boogeyman must be behind those 100 feet of trees. We didn't put a commercial business against their lot, which was allowed. We left it all residential. So we were working with the Village of Marvin and, let me finish by saying, the planning board for the Village of Marvin approved the plan on July 19th last year. The Village, and the vote was unanimous. The village council approved this plan on August 9th of last year and the vote was unanimous. So, the planning has been done, it's all been approved and the issue simply is, isn't a wastewater pump station, which there is the capacity that it'd be allowed to go through to, again, further the economic development for the Village of Marvin. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all we have signed up. Would anybody else like to speak?
I would.
Okay, if you'll state your name.
Sure. My name's Megan Despard and I live at 3513 Banyan Way and I'm the Village of Marvin. I think that the irony here is that while we are discussing a pump station, it is a slippery slope. And the surveys that have been done are accurate. I've seen them all. I was alerted to this meeting two days ago by a woman in my neighborhood who also put out and got many comments back from people who live in the Village of Marvin, that it is not merely about a pump station, it is not merely about homes that are on smaller acreage than we initially moved to Marvin to enjoy. I live on a 5-acre horse farm and I moved there for a reason. It's not about not wanting people to live in Marvin. I'm a Realtor. I actually should want people to have all these homes. I could sell them all. And I don't, and it's not about the homes, it's what comes after. If you look at the proposed plan, it also includes a 15,000-square-foot grocery store. I can get in my car and drive to Publix, Whole Foods, Target, Food Lion and Harris Teeter already. I don't want the homes and I don't want the pump station because I don't want what comes next. And that will come next and it's gonna ruin what is now known as the Village of Marvin. And anybody who denies that is not telling the truth. So I really ask you to dig deep and not at all honor this pump station because what comes next ruins what is a beautiful horse countryside.
Thank you. All right, that's all. Anybody else? All right, closing formal comments. Next, we'll go to the consent agenda. We don't have any public hearings, no. I gotta apologize, when I all started out, I thought it was a public hearing. We're so used to public hearings and a lot of the same content. I was about to tell you I had to sit down, but it's not, it's a pump station, so. Next, we have the consent agenda. Any changes to the consent agenda? Mr. Brian Helms?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to move 23-063 budget amendment, additional tuberculosis program funding off the consent agenda for discussion, please.
Let's put that just above county managers' comments. What was the number again, 23?
23-063.
Would you like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended?
Yes, I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Done, proceed. Sorry about that, we get to skip a lot of stuff after that, so we just gotta find where Okay.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Commissioners and Interim Manager Brian Matthews. It's an opportunity this afternoon for me to speak to you about a actual opportunity for savings in our annual budget that we don't get to talk about very often. As you are aware, we have been working on a general obligation bond sale based on the school bond referendum that was passed this past November during the election process. As we go through that process, we also look into the market for opportunities for any outstanding debt that we have that we may be able to refund, or you may be more familiar with the term refinance at the same time. As we have gone through this process in conjunction with our financial advisor, who is actually here with us tonight, Mitch, if you have any questions for him as we go through this process, he's here as well to help. And our management team also has been involved in the process to get us to where we are today. The reason we do this in conjunction with a general bond sale is all of the documents and processes are exactly the same and we might as well go through the same process at the same time in order to save time and effort amongst our staff. From an administration perspective, from our bond counsel and financial advisor and the LGC, they can look at both opportunities at the same time as well as when we have discussions with the credit rating agencies, we can do it all at once. So tonight, I wanted to present to you some information about what limited obligation bonds really are. You're probably more familiar with us referring to general obligation bonds. We don't do limited obligation bonds as often in the market as we do our general obligation bonds. I'll talk about the facts of the 2013 bond that's outstanding and the recommendation for refunding and the next steps that that would require and the action requested tonight to move forward for that. So to begin with, what are limited obligation bonds? So, to begin with, what are limited obligation bonds? This is a financing agreement that is authorized by state statute that counties can enter into an installment purchase contract in place through a public or private sale with a bank. These are unique compared to general obligation bonds where voter approval is not required. So, this gives the county an opportunity to finance an asset that may not be favorable by the citizens as a vote, or if you're in a situation like we were previously where the schools were needing to be built rapidly, we use this financing tool as an opportunity. The payment of the debt service on a limited obligation bond is subject to the annual appropriation by you as a board. This particular bond is backed by the general fund revenues. This is a school bond. It is secured by an asset of a real property. So, an example of this would be a mortgage that you would issue on a house. This works very similar where we have an asset that's in place to back the actual debt of this particular bond. All rules apply from the local government commission for a debt issuance for limited obligation bonds, just as you would with your general obligation bonds. And all rules are in place also for post-compliance issuance, just as any other bond that we would issue in the market. Are there any questions before we move forward?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
What is the asset that secures these bonds?
On the next slide, we'll actually get into that about the facts on the 2013 bonds that are outstanding. So, these bonds were originally issued in 2006. We did a partial refunding on them in 2012, and this particular partial refunding that we're talking about tonight was entered into in 2013. So, these bonds funded new schools that were built during the 2006, 2007 timeframe. And the security that is actually asset or pledged against this particular bond is the Marvin Ridge Middle and High School campus property on Crane Road. The outstanding principal or par amount of these bonds is $25,520,000. The original issuance of this bond, the coupon ranges were anywhere from 3% to 5% for each maturity. The call date for this particular bond is June 1, which is why this actually presents an opportunity for us today to go ahead and do a refunding of those bonds. And if you're not familiar with what callable bonds are, that means at any point in time in the market, you can call those away from the investors, and they know when they actually purchase those bonds, that they can be called at any time during the timeframe when they become callable versus them holding them until final maturity. The final maturity for the 2013 lobs is December 1, 2031. That's when we would make our final principal payment, which is our fiscal year 2032. And the trustee that we have in place for these particular bonds is Truist Bank, which previously the arrangement was entered into with BB&amp;T. Is there any questions about how this particular bond is structured? So, our recommendation for refunding the 2013 lobs would then become our Series 2023 limited obligation bonds. We would recommend that we refund the full amount of the outstanding principal. The final maturity would stay the same, so we don't extend that out any further. Same payment structure. Our trustee would remain Truist. The market today is estimating an all-in true interest cost of the refunding of 2.57%. And again, this is subject to change based on how the market moves each day, and on the day that we actually price bonds is when we'll lock in a rate. So, our prior gross debt service cost for this bond, including principal and interest payments, was $30 million. The estimated gross refunding of debt service, if we move forward with this, would be, our payments then would become over the life of the bond, $29 million. That generates an estimated net gross value savings of around 1.6, or an estimated net present value savings in today's dollars of 1.4 million. So, the estimated annual budgetary savings that we would recognize over the life of the remaining bonds is $164,000. Someone stop and ask if you have any questions about the refunding? Yes?
Is this subject to our indenture? Our general indenture, trust indenture for bonds?
It is with the trustee Truist.
Okay.
For the corporation that we'll talk about in just a minute.
It's different.
But not our revenue bond trust.
No, but it's different from our general indenture?
I'm not sure I understand.
Okay. Does this indenture need to be modified at all?
Yes, it will.
Once it, okay.
Yes.
And one other question I forgot to ask. When does the call period open on this, or is it already open?
June 1 is the first call date.
Okay, so, all right. So, you're hoping to redeem and refund as soon as this call period opens?
Yes.
All right.
And the way that works is we actually price the bonds in the market in the April timeframe, and there's a small window where Truist Bank has to hold those funds in escrow until that call date to fully pay off the outstanding par of the original bonds.
Okay. Thank you.
So, if you agree to move forward with the refunding opportunity, the next steps are that we would need to hold a public hearing at our March 6 meeting. At that same meeting, you would adopt the preliminary findings resolution for the refunding. And at that meeting, we would ask that you consider appointing members to the Union County Public Facilities Corporation. Following that, on March 20, we would ask that the Union County Public Facilities Corporation meet to consider approval of the resolution for the refunding. At your April 3 meeting, we would request that you adopt the final resolution for refunding, which then, on April 4, following our meeting, the local government commission meeting would approve the refunding as requested. We plan to price the bonds in the market. This date is penciled in by the LGC already to hold it for us if you agree to move forward on April 17. And we would close on the bonds on April 27. And on June 1, because of the call date, the outstanding bonds are redeemed and fully refunded at that time. Do you have any questions about the next steps? So, tonight, the action that we are requesting, if you are in agreeance with moving forward with the refunding opportunity, is to authorize staff to move forward with necessary documents and processes to refund the 2013 limited obligation bonds, and authorize the clerk to call for the public hearing at the March 6 meeting.
Anyone like to make that motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I move that staff be authorized to move forward with all necessary documents and processes to refund the 2013 limited obligation bonds, and authorize the clerk of the, to the board to call for a public hearing at the March 6, 2023 meeting for refunding the 2013 limited obligation bonds.
Any discussion on the motion? Real quickly, any rough estimate of how much we still have in school bonds outstanding right now?
I don't have it off the top of my head, but...
I apologize for asking the question. I should have asked.
It's over 200 million.
So, over, around 200 million or more?
It's over 200. I would have...
That's without the new bond, correct?
Right.
Okay.
I would think it's around, is it 278, 250? I don't, it's...
Okay. Thank you. All right. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
One other item, just on this, just to be aware, is that you will have to appoint members to the corporation. We'll need to, if the board wants to be those to be volunteers, we'll have to advertise for that, put that out. That may be a challenge to do by March 6. Obviously, we'll need to get that out, get the word out. Then, on March 6, you'll need to be prepared to either A, appoint volunteers, or B, consider on a temporary measure having those be staff members as a temporary measure. Again, just putting that out there. We'll need to put that information out so people can express their interest.
It would be the pleasure on the board of that. I mean, the more time sensitivity to it, you know, appointing members of the staff, which would probably be more in tune with what's going on, and then advertise this for positions and fill them as we can, just take a staff member off and fill them as the applications come in. Everybody okay with that?
So, I'd make the motion that you find, you identify the staff members that you would like to be on that committee for a temporary basis, and that we develop a plan of advertising and replacing staff with volunteers from the community.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll bring that back.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, how many volunteers are needed?
At minimum, three, up to five.
Three to five. Thank you.
So, I made that a motion, so any discussion on that motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
None opposed? Okay. Next, we have North Carolina Investment Pool Recognizable Lays again.
Yes, thank you. So, tonight, we have an opportunity to discuss an investment portfolio that we are able to invest in to give us some more options for diversifying our investment portfolio as we go into market to actually choose investments. This allows us to have an opportunity to choose this option where we have not had this opportunity in the past. So, just quickly, want to go over the North Carolina General Statutes that authorizes the investment pool, give you some facts about the North Carolina Investment Pool and the action requested tonight if you choose for us to be a participant in the pool. I'm not going to read this entire General Statute section, but North Carolina General Statute 15930 authorizes the county to deposit or invest any idle cash. And one of those items that are approved is co-mingled investment pool established and administered by the State Treasurer's Office pursuant to North Carolina General Statutes Is there any questions about the actual authority for this before I move forward about the facts for the investment pool? So, information about the North Carolina Investment Pool. It is a co-mingled local government investment pool that was established to invest idle funds in very short-term investments in accordance with North Carolina General Statutes 15930. It's duly authorized by General Statutes 15930(c10), which we just looked at. And it was created through an interlocal agreement in 2021, established under the North Carolina General Statutes 160A461 through 464. And it's administered by a compliant trust for the benefit of North Carolina local governments, and is also governed by a board of trustees. So, this investment pool was created to give local governments an opportunity to take advantage of the economies of scale to increase our investment options for idle funds. Historically, there has only been one other co-mingled trust that we've been allowed to invest in for many decades. This is the second one created in the state, which gives us an additional opportunity. This particular trust is highly rated by S&amp;P and Fitch, and will, on the next slide, I'll show you what those ratings are for the investments that they have. It's 100% liquid, so what that means is if we invest money in it today, I can turn around tomorrow and take it out if I need it to for our cash flow needs. The weighted average maturity of any investment in this particular portfolio is only 24 days, which lowers the risk of any loss that would potentially be in the market if you have a shorter duration. The yield of this trust just last week was 4.71%. The other co-mingled investment pool in North Carolina was at 4.48%. So, as you can see, there's going to be a little bit of additional opportunity to earn additional investment revenue income. Just to give you a perspective, for every $1 million we would invest for a year, we could generate an additional $2,300 of investment income over that entire year. It's a small percentage increase, but it all turns into thousands of dollars if you add it up over what we could potentially invest. Do you have any questions about the investment pool before we move on? So, the facts about this particular investment pool and how they are actually diversifying the co-mingled pool, as you can see on the left, this shows their credit quality from standards and ports, that everything that they're investing in, as you can see, is highly rated. They can only buy the top-quality commercial paper and the highly-rated federal agencies and U.S. Treasuries, which are approved through the North Carolina General Statutes for investments. As you can see on the right for the chart for the performance for the 30-day yield, the investment income opportunity has increased over time. As Treasuries and the treasurer actually increases the rates, you would expect to see these rates go up as well. The same, if they decide to start decreasing rates, you would see these rates fall off the same way. Do you have any questions about how the composition is made up of the portfolio or the credit rating before we move forward?
Anybody have a question?
So, tonight, the action requested is that you would recommend, I mean, agree to adopt the resolution to participate in the North Carolina Investment Pool and authorize the county manager, finance director, and county attorney as the officers of the participant to execute any documents necessary to participate in the North Carolina Investment Pool. And that's really the documents to open the account to begin to participate.
Would anybody like to make that motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Mr. Williams?
I move that we adopt the resolution to participate in the North Carolina Investment Pool and authorize the county manager, finance director, and county attorney as the officers of the participant to execute documents necessary to participate in the North Carolina Investment Pool.
All right. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have rezoning, CZ2022-803. Bjorn?
Evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Manager Matthews, I'm here to present the Seminole rezoning that was presented for a public hearing two weeks ago. Same information from then, although we have received one phone call, or I'm sorry, one email from a nearby resident who expressed her opposition to the rezoning over density. You were copied on that email. Also, there was a question asked about residency occupancy of the current property. It is owned by a family member of the owner of the property. And I'm happy to go through the rezoning. It is a 2.4-acre parcel proposing to split it into four lots, and it is conditional rezoning, so there's a site plan associated with it that the applicant would need to follow. The planning board recommended approval. We recommended approval. The applicant is here to answer any questions you may have. Otherwise, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
If you'd like to speak, or the landlord would like to speak?
I mean, you pretty much covered it all. What we're trying to do, rezone it from the R40 to the R20s to allow us to build the four homes on that 2.4-acre parcel. Yep.
Anybody have a question for the owner? All right, thank you. Bjorn, the surrounding homes look fairly consistent with this application?
This is the parcel map of the adjacent area. These homes in the developments are, they're either smart growth or cluster development, so you see a lot of 20,000-square-foot lots with the densities being essentially one unit per acre because it's a cluster development or a smart growth development, so they have a fair amount of open space. This would put the entirety of the development into lots, so its density would be higher, but the lot sizes are similar.
Lot sizes are similar, and it does gravity feed to the sewer?
It does.
Anybody have questions, Bjorn? Anyone want to make a motion?
One question, Bjorn. I believe this was mentioned at our last meeting, but I want to make sure the, there's one occupant currently, correct?
That is correct.
And that is a family member, if I understand that correctly as well?
That's what we, that's what we received from the owners.
Yeah, right. Other information.
And they're aware of the potential rezoning?
Yes.
I'm assuming, okay. Thank you.
All right. Anybody like to make a motion? Okay, I'll make the motion. So, this is, this one with the move that, or that we, the Union County Planning Board recommended the project, and so I'd make the motion that we adopt the ordinance, approve revision, revision to the official zoning map of Union County, North Carolina, and adopt the consistency statement, reasonableness statement for approval. And that is correct. That's the language you need, Ben?
It is. It is.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have the budget update. Michelle, is this going to be a long one?
It's not that long, but I'm happy for you to take it out of order, which I'll be here all night, whatever you want to do.
Let's see. Let's see. All right, let's, if, if the rest of the board don't mind, if it's completely legal, Ben, you make sure I'm completely legal.
You can, as long as there's no objection, you can take them out of, take them out of order.
What we would probably be a good idea to do, so everybody don't have to watch all the sausage being made, is maybe let's, let's, let's move that to the, toward the end of the agenda and get on with some other stuff so everybody don't have to spend the night with us, okay? Everybody okay with that?
No objection.
Any objections in the crowd? Any objections on the board? All right, let's, let's move forward. So we'll move that one, Michelle.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
And I'll make a recommendation if you want to consider that the item that was added that Commissioner Helms asked to be put on the regular agenda, you do have members of the press that are here, I think, for that item. You might want to consider moving that up on the agenda if you wish, obviously. Just making a suggestion for you to consider that.
Is the members of the press getting paid tonight? You're getting paid. I'll give you some, get you some extra money to believe in. Yes. All right. Now, next, we'll go to the resolution, the county line. Now, everybody be interested in this one, Michelle. Deva?
This, I think, will actually be rather quick also, Mr. Chairman. At the last board meeting, the board voted to direct staff to draft a proposed resolution in support of maintaining all assumed county boundary lines affecting properties in Union County and children, children attending Union County schools, Union County Public Schools. And so County Attorney Jason Kay drafted a resolution that was shared with you. It's, it's here before you. And this is simply to get your approval of this, and we will forward this to our delegation members at the General Assembly.
Thank you. Any, anybody like to make a motion? I'd love to make a motion, but I'd give you all to it.
Yeah, I would love to make a motion that we adopt the resolution in support of maintaining the assumed county boundary line in between Union County and Mecklenburg County.
All right. Any discussion on that motion? Just for those out in the audience, we became aware many years ago that there was a dispute over who owned what in Union County and Mecklenburg County. So the people who've been living there, paying taxes in Union County, their children are in Union County Public Schools, they've been voting in Union County elections. There's a little bit of a dispute with the line. So what we're asking the state to do, the state legislature has power over municipalities and the county. So if the state legislature rules that we can keep those boundaries that where the people have been paying taxes, that they're assumed Union County residents now, and that we can make that the line, and the, and the state legislature has that power. So therefore, we're asking them to do that. We're asking them to execute that power and just clear up any confusion about where those people who've been voting in Union County live. And we've got a lot of support, I think, from our state delegation, even from some other representatives in the, in the state. And we look for, I wholeheartedly support this motion and, and would hope all the commissioners would. So if there's no other discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, Union County Water Capital Projects Discussion. So this might interest some of you that are here for the pump station stuff, too. So this is a, this is a quick discussion of where we're at. Right, Brian?
So, this is, this is actually probably one that's going to take a little while. So we've got a lot of information to cover. I'm sure there's some questions. So if anyone needs to take a break, you might want to take breaks. We've got a whole lot to go through. All right. So the purpose of the presentation, obviously, is to get some direction from the board. When we last met, we were talking about the impacts of funding in our, our capital program for the utility. And in order for us to move forward with a number of items, that's our system development fee study, our capital plan, we really have to understand from the board, what is your direction for the utility for the future. And that's really part of why we're here today, is to get some direction from you. And again, there's a number of, of obstacles that we need to face and get, get your input on. So one of the things to deal with when you are putting together a capital plan for a utility has to do with cash flow. And how do you fund all the projects that you have? And I know that there's some concern about the previous approved project list, which was over $1 billion. It's very aggressive. I understand that. There were some rate increases, several rate increases per year for five years that were in place. Board chose to change that. But what that did is that changed the way our cash flow works. And so just to give everyone in the public and the board and sort of an idea of the way it works is we use cash, we use revenue from bond sources, and then we also use future bonds to map out how we intend on paying for those projects. And so that's debt, obviously, that we're issuing. So we have debt that we've already issued that we're going to use for projects, that, that basically that money is in our account. We have cash that we've generated from the rates that we collect from our customers, system development fees. And then we have future debt that was intended to be issued in order to fund projects. Now, again, the board's philosophy may be that you don't want future debt. That's fine. Those are all part of the discussions we have to have. But that's how the model was set up before, those combinations of items. So, you know, as we, as we look through this, we typically try to, number one, use the bond proceeds first. When we have cash from bonds, that's the first way we try to pay for a project. Then, if there's any deficiency left in that project, we will use cash. And sometimes, we will use cash to fund that project and hold, depending on what type it is. And ultimately, we try to refund ourselves cash from any bond proceeds. So it's always bond proceeds first, and then ultimately, cash is really last, if possible. That's how we try to structure that. So the previous resource, or the current resources that were available for capital, and this was as of your January 17th meeting, and I want to point out a few things. This is, this is what was going to be. This was prior to the decision to actually roll the rates back and to make a decision on those future projects. So this was all sort of in the hopper, the way we had originally intended it for me. So you had a number of projects that were in place. You had, this is the, you had almost $209 million of balance for projects in the total. And that's made up of restricted bonds and unrestricted cash. You had some spending that you actually did over that timeframe from when the board made a decision to change the rates. So there's some spending we had to also, had to account for. We had remaining funds available. And in the end, what you see is there's actually a deficit of $4.2 million that we were not able to continue to fund because we hadn't changed our rate structure. Now, that doesn't mean that, you know, we can't figure out some way to do projects. It's just showing you what it looked like in the previous scenario. So moving forward, this is as of August of '22, just telling you some resources. We had our starting point, I told you, $4.10 million was in the negative. We had some cash of almost $40 million, system development fees of $6.4 million. And then they asked the question, well, where's the $11 million? That $11 million was previously already set aside. This is as of August '22. That's the estimate for system development fees. So that, that is not the same, same number. We had some ARPA funds that were set aside. Obviously, there's some additional revenue from ARPA funds. We had some future bonds. That's where we said we thought we would issue debt to pay for projects, and we estimated that was roughly $100 million. We would need to issue for that. And then we had some additional funding of $400,000 that were part of our whole resources for FY '23. Again, these were all things that we intended to do in the past. And so that shows you your total unrestricted, restricted, and your total amounts that was anticipated. And here's where we spent. You look at the line item at the bottom, we, we actually expenditures, and then our planned projects. We actually planned for $158 million in projects during that timeframe. And so again, that gave us a deficit that we would not be able to fund all those projects on that. So just make sure you were aware that that's how that, that's how that worked. So I showed you some ARPA funding, which was $18.1 million. There is additional funds that we have available for the purpose of the utility. And that $18.1 is built into this. So the state set aside for the county $35 million for the Yadkin distribution system. That's our waterline distribution. And so they have set aside $35 million to pay for that project. They also set aside $8 million for projects within the Lower Crooked Creek. And that's these three projects that are here. $4.8 million approximately to pay for the purchase of the Site B property, which we have already purchased that property. $3.2 million to go towards a expansion for the Grassy Branch wastewater treatment plant. That is a consent order project that we have to do for the state. And then we also had some additional county ARPA funds, $1.75 million that we would also put towards that Grassy Branch project to try and get us closer to finishing that project. We also had originally set aside $10 million for the 762 12-inch main transmission line. That is a parallel line that was originally set aside for ARPA funds. We have a waterline project with Indian Trail that we're sharing and cost in. So we were going to put $400,000 of our own ARPA money into that. And then, of course, Indian Trail was matching that. There's some well-testing dollars. That's actually not going to the utility. I know it shows in this number, but technically, that is to reimburse those individuals who applied for our 2023 short-line extension program. As part of that, the board agreed that you would require well-testing, but you would reimburse those individuals for that cost. That's where those funds are coming from, for that reimbursement. And then last, there's an additional $5 million of unallocated county ARPA funds that make up that total. Now, you'll see several of those have an asterisk, and that's because the board will need to make a decision. Do you want to reassign or assign those funds to some project in the future? Now, those have strings attached. Those ARPA dollars have to be spent by 2026. So again, we have to make sure our project that we pick, we can design it and construct it and finish it by December of 2026. So that's a, that's the caveat. So just want to show you our cash flow over the next 10 years. Again, this is all information you have. There's additional information that you've, you've got in your packet, but you have all this if you want to refer back to it in the, later on. So again, we, we estimate that we're going to collect about $73.5 million in revenue based on our rates in 2023. We're going to have system development fees. Again, we're going to estimate those are roughly $5.7 million. And then there's other revenues that we receive, roughly $3 million, for a total of $82.3 million in FY '23, the current budget year that we're in. And then you see how those change over the next few years. And this is, of course, based on the board's decision to change our rate structure. So these are the revenues that we anticipate that we will collect based on the board's recent decision. You can see our expenses. 2023, we intend on having our operating expenses a little over $44 million. Our debt service payment is a little over $21, $21 million. And then we have a required reserved per board policy. The board's policy is that we keep 365 days of your operating expenses in a reserve, and then you also fund depreciation. So that makes up our board policy for reserves. So you have, per board policy, you're a $10, $10.7 million increase for our reserves. So that, that gives you a total of $76 million with a net cash of a little, almost $6 million, meaning we have almost $6 million that we can put towards things within the system. Not a lot of money, but that's, I mean, that's based on our current revenue sources. If you can see in FY 2024, that actually shows as a deficit. We estimate that we're going to have about a $2.3 million deficit that year, all things being equal. We have a higher debt payment. Understand, that's going up to $25.7 million, and we'll maintain that $25.7 million debt payment for several years. Actually, you see that runs out through the 10-year period. Our operating expenses do go up, and they go up based on inflation. They go up based on the, the cost of goods and materials. And we do have staffing that occasionally causes our operation costs go up. So they do go up annually. And then, as you'll see, our reserves also have to increase accordingly. In FY '24, that particular reserve is mostly related to the, the depreciation amount. Our Yadkin Water Plant will be coming online. When that comes online, then we must actually book our depreciation reserve at that point in time. So the bulk of that $12 million is for the depreciation for, for that reserve. It's, some of it is for our operating and maintenance, but that's a smaller amount. The opposite is true for 2023. That is almost all for operating expenses and only a small, a small amount for your depreciation total. Any questions at this point while I'm going through? Okay. So, system, system development fees, I wanted to talk a little bit about that so you kind of understand how we do that and give you an example. I talked about the $11 million that we received, I believe it was in 2022. So we collect funds from, expand, from our new customers, so those people who are becoming new customers, new development. We have a way of collecting system development fees for water and for sewer, and it's broken out that way. And then we, we, when we collect that money, we recognize it towards the end of the fiscal year. So we estimate what it'll be, but we don't officially recognize it until around May of the actual fiscal year. So in this particular circumstance, around May of 2022, we recognize we had $11.1 million. We figured out, well, this is how we're intend on using that money. You were going to spend about $2.6 million on your Yadkin River water treatment because that money was collected in the water side. You were going to also spend about $2.5 million on your Catawba River Treatment Plan expansion, again, because that was water. That's how that money was, was determined. And then you took your, your system development fees that were generated from sewer, and it was broken up predominantly by putting that towards your 12-Mile Creek wastewater treatment expansion. Now, there's actually more than this anticipated for that because we had some additional cash in the arrears that we could put towards that. So that really, that total, if we were to do that, the board says you want to do the expansion for, for 12 Mile, we can use that money, that $5.2 million in system development fees, plus there's an additional approximately $3 million. So about $8 million in system development fees that we could use towards that expansion for the 12-Mile wastewater treatment plant. And then there was a small amount for our Crooked Creek plant. So this is how we do our system development fees. When we get those and we recognize those dollars, we determine, is it water? Okay? If it's water, we have to use that for water. We have to spend that for water projects. If it's sewer, then we have to spend it for sewer projects. We also further separate it by basin. So if I collect it in 12-Mile Creek, we spend it in 12-Mile Creek. If we collect it in Crooked Creek, we spend it in Crooked Creek. We don't spend it across lines. That's not to say you can't do that. That's how we set the system up to be split by basin. So just be aware, that's our policy. Okay. So I talked to you about the reserves, and I want to make sure you can see what I meant when I was talking about how our, our reserves are determined. So for 2023... So for 2023, I'm sorry, 2022, our operating and maintenance costs were really around $33 million, and they're actual. So our reserves are estimated, but we put in reserve based on the actual amount. And we don't know the actual amount until the end of the fiscal year. But we anticipate what those costs will be. When we know what they are, then our reserves have to match what that is. So for actuals in 2022, we had $33.6 million in operation and maintenance cost. Our depreciation, which we currently have in hand, is almost $20 million, 19.9, for a total reserve target of $53.5 million. I say that because I want to point out that there is some funding available in your depreciation reserve, nearly $20 million. This other reserve, which is your 365-day reserve, that's, those are dollars we would never recommend that you touch, but you do have some opportunities within your depreciation reserves if the board were to choose that. In future years, what you see is that now we're estimating our operating maintenance expenses at 43 million. And a lot of that has to do with the Yadkin Plant coming online. There's a lot of other capital projects that were put in place. That's why that number is much higher, as you can see. We also have a higher depreciation, went up to 21 million for a total reserve of 64, and the bulk of that in 2023 really is going towards this cost. We're having to make up almost $10 million in reserve because your operating and maintenance cost went higher. In 2024, it's different. Your operating maintenance cost only went up by 2 million, so your system development, I mean, so your reserve amount is mostly for depreciation and less for the operation and maintenance cost. So annually, if you look at the bottom, you'll see that there are some monies available if the board chose to look at a cash position of using some of your depreciation reserves to cover costs. Any other questions? All right. So what do we do with our funding demand? So we're going to need some direction from the board. First, we would always, we would recommend that any project that's currently in construction that we continue through construction. And I'll get to some numbers on that in the future, but these are things that we would recommend you do. We'd recommend that any projects that's in design would continue through construction if there's a requirement to complete it. And then we would recommend that you focus on your renewal and replacement projects. That's the maintenance of your system. That's keeping the lights on. That's keeping it operating. And then projects in design would continue through design, and at the board's discretion, if you wanted to move forward with construction, we could, but we would stop at design, and then you would decide whether you wanted to move forward. And then projects that are not in design or in construction are halted, and expansion projects would be halted. And that's all based on current revenues. Board made a decision, this is all the money we have. The month, when I showed you that previous slide, there is no additional revenue coming in other than the ARPA dollars. So if you want to do projects, we're going to have to find other sources of funding to be able to do those projects. And I'll talk about that in more detail in just a second. So you've got a sheet there, and it shows you how to read your, how to look at that. I'm not going to go over that with you, but I want to talk about this. And so this is our assumption. Number one, projects are in construction. We think you should keep doing those projects. What you see in this middle column is, if it has a parentheses around it, that means we're actually realizing some savings or we're not spending as much on the project. We're able to return dollars back to the utility to use for other purposes. If it does not, that means we are deficient. We now need that amount of money in order to cover that project. And there are reasons for that. It could be that that project was intended to be funded with future revenue bonds. And if it was intended to be funded with future revenue bonds, and we don't intend on issuing debt, then we have to figure out a way to pay for it now. So that's why those numbers will show that's a need, but there wasn't a source at the time to pay for it. We had to change the source for that. So you see, we are able to find in this particular circumstance for water, and this is for water wastewater facilities, that we actually have a, we're returning back to the system, a little over $7.3 million, because we're able to realize some savings and some way to adjust that. That's the good news. However, there is some bad news to it. There are projects where we don't have funding sources for it. And these are the ones that are in the design that we would recommend that you continue through construction. And the large one up there is 13.2 million for the 853 West Transmission Zone. Again, there is no funding available for that. It was a future bond sort, future bonds. So we'll have to figure out how to way to pay for that. Where we've tried to identify where we have funding, say, from a different source, we've been indicated that that's ARPA for the Yadkin Project. So that's why we don't show an amount there. We intend on paying for that with the ARPA dollars. We also have some other improvements that we show, because we are deficient on the Grassy Branch Expansion. Even though we're able to come up with some additional revenues, hopefully from ARPA, we're still deficient on paying for that entire project. There wasn't enough funds to cover the entire expansion for that. And then you'll also see some things that we have contractually required to do. We have a contract to do this $1 million project on Potters and Pleasant Plains Road. We have a Chestnut Water Lane Connector. Again, there's a contract for that particular project. We do have some that we're returning, but that list actually has a deficit of over $25 million. So that particular list of projects, we need $25.7 million to fund all of those projects. Now, R and R, you know, this is the leaving, turning the lights on. This is, you know, making sure that we're maintaining the system. Same thing. We have a number of projects that we were intending on funding with future revenue sources that we don't have. So that total adds up to almost 7.5 million. I'm not going to go through each one of them, but we don't have, obviously, enough funds to cover all of those in the current scenario. So we are deficit of 7.5 million. Projects to be halted. These are the ones that we recommend that you don't move forward with unless we discuss some other ways to fund projects. So we would not recommend that you do the 853 Phase 3. We do realize some savings back from that. There are some projects you'll see, however, that even we're recommending that you don't move forward. We're actually, we have to pay ourselves back for that. We've expended cash in some of these items, so we've already paid for a portion of that work already. But we'll stop. When we stop, that means we're able to put $1.1 million back into the program. We're saying we're stopping these projects. We're able to put those funds back into our capital plan and say, what can we do with them? Additional projects that we have halted here as well. One of the items that I want to point out to you, so we have it in there. No, it's not showing on that. I'll show it on a later slide. Okay. So expansion, all the ones I was showing you before in construction, in design, R and R, they're projects that the board has on your list that are expansion, meaning that we are expanding the system. We're either building new capacity, putting in additional lines to serve more customers, whatever that may be, we're calling those expansion projects. These are things that we would not fund and we'd officially would halt. I want to point out that the FY '22 short water line and the FY '23 short water line are part of that. We don't have the funds to pay that unless you take it out of some other source. And those two were originally planned to be roughly $10 million, $5 million for each one of them. So that's $10 million we'd have to come up with if you want to finish those projects. We're also recommending that we, you know, if you don't want to do it, that we don't do the 12 Mile Creek expansion unless we find other sources. Again, that's another item that we would no longer do.
The expansion to nine?
Seven and a half to nine. That's, again, if we don't find additional revenue sources, if you, if there's no way for the board to come to an agreement on how to find other revenue sources, then we would suggest you halt that project and you don't do anymore with that project. That 1.9 million that's shown there, that's what we've expended already in design. We're about 95% finished with design on that project. So we're close to being able to say, let's go out to construction if we can find a way to fund it. And that's really what this boils down to. But if the board says, no, we don't want to do some of these funding options, then we would recommend we not do that project if that's the board's decision. So kind of giving you sort of the total here, your current budget year, you've got $137 million worth of projects. This is just showing you the all-in. That's everything that we would have had to do with your water, your wastewater, your R and R, and your facilities. You've got a demand, a deficit of $1.7 million when you take all of that and add that together. And then the future just shows you projects that were intended to be done in the future we're just not going to recommend to do. This bulk of this wastewater one was that Site B project, about $300 million. So that's the bulk of that. The water project, understand with the current revenue picture, we would not move forward with an expansion of the Catawba Regional Water Plant, which that is planned for the future within the next 10 years. And we would not move forward with an expansion of the Yadkin Plant, which is planned in out years. And those are where those numbers come from. Those were built into our master plan to consider expansions for those facilities. So we would not recommend doing those things unless we change our funding sources. So cash demand. This is, this is based on if we were to fund 2023, as we indicated, all of the projects that we would recommend you do, R and R, the wastewater projects that we would recommend you do, the water projects we recommend you do. We have essentially a $7.4 million total that we need to come up with for that, for that year. FY '24, this is just R and R. And what you see going forward are all R and R projects, with the exception of 29 and 31. And 29 and 31 are, they are water-related R and R projects. That's why you see those in out years. But these numbers in here are all wastewater and other R and R projects. You will see some spikes in years 24, 28, and 30. And again, those spikes are based on when we know we have certain items to do in our program, R and R. We put that specifically in those years. That's why you see those spikes. So as you can see, the funding need, if we just have a cash model, we're only doing cash, we're not doing any debt, these are our needs for '23 through '32. And that's doing R and R only in '24 through '32 and doing current projects that we have on the list for 2023. So how does that, how does that look? So you see a lot of red there. And the reason why there's a lot of red is because, as I told you in the very beginning, we had a roughly almost $6 million of surplus. We have a demand of 7.5 million. If we do every one of those projects that we said we, that we recommend you consider, there's a death, there's a demand of 7.5. So we've got a $1.5 million real deficit that we have to make up for in 2023. If you did everything that we recommend you do for 2024, a little bit different. 2024 has a bigger number, and that's because, number one, we have a lot of R and R, and we already have a deficit because we're not generating enough revenue in 2024. We actually were, we actually were at zero or a bit of a deficit in 2024. So those combined totals are all, are over $14 million between '23 and '24. '25, you do see that we do generate some balance also in '26, but you still have a deficit. So that deficit is going down. And then when you see in the out years, we are still losing ground. Now, the reason I point this out is that's based on if the board did no rate increases whatsoever for the 10-year timeframe. I don't think that's reasonable. Inflation is going to, we're going to have to deal with inflation. There are going to be projects that you're going to want to fund, and we're going to have to figure out a way to fund those. So I don't think it's reasonable to assume you will have no rate increases, but we don't know what you're willing to do, what your appetite is. So if you do nothing, that's what your picture looks like. There's a lot of red because there's not a lot of revenue to cover all those projects. So what are the observations that I want you to take away from this? There's just not enough cash to pay for even R and R ongoing, based on current sources. There's just not enough cash. All non-R and R projects would be stopped in 2024, so we'd focus only on R and R. That's all we would do. And your expansion projects would be stopped. If you want to do more, this is what you could consider. You could consider taking money from your reserves. So that depreciation reserve, we could repurpose those dollars to your capital plan. You could consider a small rate increase, again, in order to allow some borrowing and some debt to be able to cover that. Those are all things you could consider. And then also just be aware that your system development fee study is currently in progress, and your capital plan will make, will decide what those numbers will be. Right now, it's $7,400 for water and sewer together. We don't know what those numbers are going to be until the board says, I want my capital plan to be X. You tell us it's only R and R, then we're going to tell StanTech it's only R and R, and that's all we're doing. They're going to build that into the system development fee study, and it'll come back what it is. My opinion is, it won't be as much as it is now. It'll probably be lower because it's based mostly on your capital projects. If you have a smaller capital plan, it's most likely that your system development fee will be lower. Just that's how, that's how it works. Be aware that there may be an opportunity for us to keep the water one stable because we're adding the Yadkin Project in. It's now at a maintenance level once it goes on. So the way we calculate that, that may help us with keeping the water system development fee stable. The sewer one is the one that you may see some decline in, depending on what the board does with your future projects. So just be aware of it. We have to tell StanTech, what is your capital plan for a minimum of the next five years? You can go out 20, but what's your minimum five-year plan for capital? So that's, that's something that we're going to have to give them. So I mentioned about options. What can you do with your ability to fund future projects? Just to give you an idea, if you did a rate increase of 1%, you generate roughly about $32.7 million in additional funds. 2%, approximately $66.3 million in additional funds. And those can also be used for debt. You can actually debt fund some projects that way. So if the board were to say, listen, we're sticking with this cash model. We're only going to fund with cash. We're not going to consider any other options. If we had to come up with that $14.8 million deficit, remember when I went back and I said, I want to show you that right here? If you look at '23 and '24, these are the things where we're deficient on. If we were to have to come up with that, this is what we would recommend. We would essentially stop or halt these projects that are here. We would defer a number of these for later years. Understand what deferred maintenance is. It's never cheaper to do maintenance in the future, but in order to put those costs off, we would delay those projects. But it's not cheaper to do it in the future. You will have some cost increase. And there's some things that we would just, we would just do at some later date to be determined. And that's how we would get at the roughly $14.8 million to be able to balance that budget and use only cash to pay for those items. This is what, that's what our recommendation would be. So the challenges, so having a cash model only, obviously, you can't fund everything that we have. We just, we can't. We just, we can't. To balance our revenues and expenditures, we'd really have to change our R and R program. We'd have to actually slim that down. It's more reactive than it is proactive. We couldn't do expansion projects. And then there's always the possibility that when you defer maintenance, you could have some unforeseen circumstances. These are just things that we want you to be aware of. And obviously, there are things coming that we don't know how much are going to cost, PFOS, those regulatory requirements. We don't know what those costs are going to be. So there's all things that we'll have to deal with. So options, cash only. We can do a cash-only option if that's what you want. And what we'll do is, we will roll back a number of our R and R projects to balance that budget. However, we can find additional sources if the board wants to do some additional sources. And those things are, you know, if you want to do some of that revenue from your depreciation, if you want to do a potential rate increase, these are projects that you can fund if you were to consider that. You can fully fund your R and R. You can fund your 12 Mile Creek Expansion if you're willing to, and you could also consider the Crooked Creek Interceptor. I would recommend that we use our depreciation dollars to actually cover the renewal and replacement projects. So we have roughly $20 million in depreciation dollars. I would put that towards that $14.8 million deficit. That's how I would cover those R and R projects. I would then have the board consider a small rate increase in order to fund the 12 Mile Creek Expansion. I believe that a 1.5% rate increase would be able to allow you to fund the 12 Mile Creek Expansion. A 2% rate increase could fund both the 12 Mile Creek and the Crooked Creek Interceptor. You'd be able to generate enough dollars to cover our debt service and be able to generate enough revenue to do those two expansion projects, as well as your renewal and replacement if you use some of your reserves to fund that deficit that we have for reserves.
Brian, with that, a quick question.
Yes, sir.
You spoke to our state delegation this morning. They had a possibility of coming up with some funding from state sources. This doesn't take any of that into account, correct?
It does not because honestly, don't have that bird in the hand. That would certainly help if we were able to get those additional dollars. One of the things we're also doing is, and that's not shown on here, but we would take the ARPA dollars, it's roughly $16 million, and we would funnel that $16 million of ARPA dollars to that 12 Mile Creek Expansion. 12 Mile Creek Expansion is intended, it's estimated to be a $47 million project. $2 million for design, which we've already spent. $45 million for construction. That's not a bid number. That's an estimate number. I'm not going to know what the bid numbers are until we go out to bid, but that's our estimate right now, $45 million. Keep in mind that if we put $16 million towards that, that lowers that amount that we need. Then if we're able to then possibly get some additional money from the state, that brings that number down, but we're still deficient. We're not going to make up $45 million with those revenue sources, which leads us to, your really only other options are to consider a small rate increase. Now, the board could tell me today, Brian, listen, we're going to focus on expansion, and we're not going to, we're not going to really worry about the R and R program. We're going to put all our dollars into the expansion. And you can do that. I would never recommend you do that because you're not keeping the system operating efficiently. You can do that. The board can always make that decision. But I would recommend that you fund R and R fully because that's important, and that we find these other sources to make up the deficit that we have for that expansion project. Now, this is scaling back your capital plan significantly. It's really only adding two, two expansion projects, 12 Mile Creek and Crooked Creek, if that's what you want to do. You could even say, we're not going to do the Crooked Creek Interceptor. We're just going to do the 12 Mile Creek Plant. But that would be my recommendation, is the board consider those particular items for expansion and give us the direction to look at a small rate increase and using those other dollars from ARPA as well as from our reserves to cover the balance of what we're missing. Any questions from the board? I noticed a lot of information. I gave you a lot of numbers. One thing I want to point out to you is if you look at those numbers anywhere in these project lists, so if you see where I'm talking about hip here, where a reference number, if you want to know that particular project, you have a file that actually has that reference number on it. You can refer that back to that particular project. You can see details about it. You can see its cost. You can look at specifics on that project. So they refer back to what's in your handout that you have. You can always look at that if you wish to. But again, ultimately, we do need some direction from the board on your philosophy and how you want to handle our current revenue picture. Any questions for me?
I have some. So with this, we're talking about the Winget, which is already funded by ARPA dollars. The Winget.
The 762 project.
Yeah, so taking water from the Yadkin Plant to the town of Winget, that's funded by ARPA dollars.
That's correct. Yes, sir.
We're talking about the 12 Mile Creek going from 7.5 million gallons per day to 9 million gallons per day.
If the board chooses to do that project, we would allocate $16 million of your ARPA funds towards that particular project. We would also use eight, roughly $8.3 million of your system development fees towards that project. And then obviously, we'd have to make up the balance of that for a rate increase, in my opinion, because you still have a deficit.
Or finding additional revenues.
If you're able to find it some other way, yes. I don't know where it is, but yes.
And then the Crooked Creek Interceptor line.
That's about $16 million. The only way we would pay for that one, honestly, that's not in here. There's no ARPA dollars to cover that. That's a rate increase or other revenue sources if you come up with those. But there's no ARPA dollars to cover that project.
And our bond folks are here, correct?
Yes, well, our financial advisor is here.
Okay. Now, one interesting thing that you told me after our last meeting was, maybe the meeting before, that we always assumed that you could not use GO bonds on a utility project.
That's correct.
But you were told by bond counsel that we could?
Yeah, so what we were told by our bond counsel is, the board asked the question first, are revenue bonds voted on by the public? And they're not. They're not voted on by the public. And then the question was really, well, you know, can you? And because they're not voted on by the public, that's not how they work. General obligation bonds are voted on by the public in a referendum. So the, our bond counsel said, you actually can use general obligation bonds for water and sewer projects. And instead of you pledging your taxing authority, you're really pledging your rate authority. It's kind of like a revenue bond, but not. Now, understand, if you don't raise your rates and your revenues, then they could come back later and say, okay, your taxing authority now has to kick in to pay for this if you didn't do it. But you can pledge essentially your rate authority to do a GO bond, and you can have the public vote on that in a referendum. And that's not prohibited. That's allowed.
So you don't need permission to do the Winget line? It's, well, you do, but you don't. It's, the state's offering up that money.
I'm not sure I understand.
The Winget Water Line.
Permission from the board?
Yeah, you need permission from the board to spend it, I guess, but the state's.
I mean, obviously, contractually, we'll have to include that. What we'll need is the board's approval of the capital plan. And as long as you say that's one of the projects you want to see in the capital plan, we're going to move forward with it. So that's what we're looking for, obviously, is what do you want to do with your capital plan? Are you willing to fund it in other ways to accommodate some of these capital expansion projects?
Right. Well, the 12 Mile Creek, which we've already got in design and planned and could have a date in time for, we have to spend the ARPA money by 2026.
Yes, sir.
So we could get that done by 2026.
Yes, sir.
Which would open up the line that's currently being kind of held. Everybody's in the queue.
That's correct.
That would open up for commercial and residential. Then we have the water line to Winget, which again, is funded through the state.
Yes, sir.
Which is also ARPA dollars that we have to spend, and you believe you can get both those projects done by 2026.
We actually believe that, and again, this is all dependent on us starting in this year, this calendar year. As long as we can start in this calendar year, we believe that we can finish the Yadkin Water Line, the one that runs to Winget. We can finish the 12 Mile Creek Expansion, and we can also finish the Crooked Creek Interceptor Project if the board wanted to move forward with that as well. Those are all projects that we are far enough along in that we could complete them by 2026 as long as we start in this calendar year.
Okay. And then the Interceptor Line, that's not time-sensitive because there's no ARPA money in that line?
Well, yes. If we don't use any ARPA dollars in it, then that would not be time-sensitive. We use no ARPA dollars in that.
Okay. Well, I'd like to make a motion, and then, I'd like to actually make two motions. The first one I would make would be that we give permission to go ahead and do the Winget Water Transmission Line with the ARPA funding and the 12 Mile Creek going from 7.5 to 9 million gallons per day.
So.
Both those, if you got started now, you can complete in time.
Right. Now, I want you to understand, there's not enough dollars to cover the 12 Mile Creek Expansion.
Correct. But we're looking for those dollars right now. And it could include a future rate increase. It could.
Yeah, so this is what I'm going to have to do. So as long as the board understands, I'm going to take what you give me today. I'm going to give it to StanTech. They have our rate model. They're going to plug all that in, and they're going to say, based on that, yes, you can do it, or you have to issue bond, you have to issue debt. In order to issue debt, you can meet your requirements, your bond test, all of those standards that we have to meet. You can meet them if you do this amount of rate increase, 1.5, 2, whatever the number is. I need to know the project so then they can then plug it in and say, based on your cash flow, this is what we can accommodate. So if you want to do those projects, tell me so I can have them run that model, and it's going to tell you what is the rate increase that you're going to have to incur. I'm going to tell you, you're going to have to incur a rate increase. We don't have the money to come up with those extra dollars.
Well, now, I did not say the Crooked Creek Interceptor.
That is correct. I didn't hear you say that. But even with that, there is still not enough revenue to cover the 12 Mile Creek Expansion without some rate increase.
And that would look like?
My guess is that's about a 1.5% rate increase.
But not a 7%?
No, God knows, sir.
Or 22%, 33%.
22, or 33, or 7. But I think you could accommodate it at around a 1. Now, again, they're going to tell you for sure what that number is. I'm telling you, based on what I know, I think you can do it for about 1.5%.
Or we find additional sources.
Or somebody gives us a big payday.
Uncle Todd.
That's right.
Raleigh.
Uncle somebody.
All right. So any discussion on that motion?
Well, I'd like to have a discussion on this significant presentation before we start debating individual motions about moving funds around. So, Mr. Chairman, I would respectfully ask that, you know.
Let's hold the motion, but you can go ahead. I mean, I'll keep the motion on the floor, but if you want to discuss, go ahead.
All right. Well, thank you. Brian, first of all, thank you for this presentation. It's a lot of information, and I have to say, I've supplemented it with some information that staff provided this board at the last meeting in January, January 17. And it's just, it's really a wealth of information. We all got this. And it reflects basically what is evident in the slides that you've presented tonight. When you look at budgeted funding sources for wastewater, for water, for R and R, and for facilities, when you look at all of that, whether you look at it for all the projects in construction, design, not started, or in planning, or whether you just look at design and construction only, you'll find that the single largest category of funding that we are planning on relying on is future revenue bonds. I mean, and here's just an example. For wastewater projects, and I've got the entire list here, the future revenue bond need is over $57 million. The cash need, $16,962,000. Water projects, future revenue bond need, $49,400,000. Cash need, $44,198,000. There are additional funding needs here. I won't get into all the details of SDF and ARPA, which I know we're planning on using. We're planning on using all the funding sources we possibly can. But the real point here is, you know, take away the Crooked Creek wastewater facility. I mean, I think at this point, this board has taken that, put a stake through its heart and buried it. We do not have anywhere close to a rate structure that can support necessary capital projects this county needs. And you had some pretty dire slides up there, and I'd like you to return to one or two of them, perhaps the one, I think, on page, we'll start with page 20 maybe, page 21. I can't remember which one it was.
Is it that one?
Yeah. Yeah, that's pretty dire. And we can forget about fiscal year '28 through '32 because 10 years is a long time, but I think five years is reasonable to look at. You know, five years is the period that the prior board looked at in terms of establishing a rate structure because, surprise, surprise, for water and sewer projects, the planning timeline, the design timeline, the construction timeline, getting it all finished up, it takes a while for these projects. So it makes sense that, you know, you're going to have an extended timeline. So the prior board made a decision on a five-year schedule. The current board, over a five-year schedule, rolled all that back. But, you know, the point is, we just don't have the cash to do R and R. We don't have the cash, as you pointed out, to even expand 12 Mile and for even the 9MG. And here's something I'd like to kind of ask you about, Brian. Now, did senior staff meet with one of our representatives from a rating agency recently?
Yes, sir. We met with Fitch.
Fitch, okay. And was there a report that eventually came out from Fitch?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And I believe, if I'm not mistaken, that was provided for all the board.
Yes, it sure was. And I'd just like to read a paragraph from this and perhaps encourage some discussion on it. This is a paragraph from that report issued by Fitch. Fitch assumed capex of $72.8 million between fiscal year 2023 and 2027, funded with $58.3 million in cash, $14.5 million in ARPA funds. Additionally, another $140 million is assumed to be spent on final work at the Yadkin Water Treatment Plant that is financed with the remaining bottom price proceeds, which we know about, already issued. But here, you know, this is, this is pretty extraordinary, this last sentence. No additional debt is included in the analysis. Now, you know, we've seen here clearly that we have needs for funding sources that come from future revenue bonds. As a matter of fact, when you look at all of these projects, when you even look at water and wastewater individually and only those in construction and design, we have a need for future revenue bonds. Now, is Fitch saying that they assumed no additional bond issuance because they believed we didn't have a need for future revenue bonds? Or did they come to that conclusion, do you think, because they understand our rate structure simply won't support issuance of new revenue bonds?
I think it was really based on that they know the current rate structure will not allow us to issue debt.
Okay.
That's my understanding.
All right. Well, that's pretty significant. That's a pretty significant point there. We know most of our funding has to come from future revenue bonds, and, you know, we're just, we don't have a rate structure that allows for it. Now, can you, I have some questions about, you know, we went through this so fast and furiously, it's hard for me to remember what pages, but in your manager recommendations, what page was that?
26.
Right there.
Okay, thank you. Now, we're talking about getting us through fiscal year '23 and '24, correct, with this?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So for projects that we need to design and plan for, for fiscal year '25, fiscal year '26, fiscal year '27, the end part of that five-year period. year '26, fiscal year '27, the, the end part of that five-year period, this doesn't really solve that, right? In other words, this solution doesn't fund our, our R and R and our expansion needs for those outer years. Does it, does it do that adequately?
It does not address those potential future needs. We would have to look at those on, at that basis and determine, is there an additional revenue source you need to come up with for some of those future dollars?
Okay.
It will certainly trim that need back, but it will not address all of it.
Okay. And in terms of other funding sources like SDF, I, I know in, in a number of presentations, the prediction for that is FD, SDF is declining, that our SDF revenues are expected to decline. Is that because the growth in the system basically is slowing, so the SDF fees are, are falling consequentially?
So it's, it's a combination, obviously. It's, it's, it's what are your fees? What are you growing the system to? And so we use, we'll see in the outer years that if we assume no expansion because our cash position doesn't allow us to do expansion, then yes, you're seeing that the outer years, you have a slower growth. Because your, our growth is mostly in sewer accounts. So if you think about it, when we issue, when we have, so we had 1,300 new accounts added in 2022. All right. Well, those were almost all water and sewer accounts. Water only only made up 100 of those accounts. So by and far, your growth in your system is water and sewer customers together. So when you cut down your expansion for your sewer system, by default, your growth numbers will decline over time. Now, you're not gonna see that for the first couple of years because we already have permits that are already in place. There are people who have projects that are underway. They have sewer already allocated for. So those growth numbers for the next two-plus years will be pretty stable, depending on the market, obviously. But when you see that we don't have expansion for the, for sewer, we have no more sewer to goo, then you'll see those growth numbers to decline significantly.
Okay. And just a few more questions. Renewal and replacement, I think most of us would agree, pretty important to do renewal and replacement. There are some projects that are in construction where we're relying on a future revenue issuance, correct? Like, I think, the SCADA?
There are.
Water and wastewater.
What we had to do, actually, is we had to shift that to a cash funding source. So when we said we were gonna pay for it with, with future revenue, future debt, we had to say, no, we're gonna have to pay for that with cash, which is why we had the deficit because you have, now, I got to pay it with cash, I can't pay for it with debt, so I have to use cash. We didn't have enough cash, so that's why we showed a deficit.
Okay. And now, you had mentioned as a possible funding source, using admittedly some of the ample reserves that are in the, the utility.
Sorry.
And if, if this needs to be directed perhaps to our finance person, that's, that's great too. But is there a, is there potentially a consequence when we start using kind of as a one-time measure, reserves in the utility? Could there be a consequence in terms of ratings from the three bond rating agencies? Might there be a consequence in terms of us, in future fiscal years, even being able to maintain our financial ratio, ratios and our covenants that we're obliged to keep in our bond indentures?
So, yes, there's always the opportunity that we could have a, a negative consequence or a negative impact to our bond rating. What Commissioner Williams is talking about is currently, we have a policy, board policy, that your reserves is made up of two things, 365 days of operating and maintenance and your depreciation. The rating agencies don't look at it that way. They just look at cash on hand. So it doesn't matter to them that we're, we're including depreciation in that, they're just look, how much cash on hand do you have? And how does that compare to you other peer organizations? If we obviously take money out of our depreciation reserves, our cash on hand will, it will decline. By default, it will decline. And that could have an impact on how rating agencies look at our position within our current bond ratings. So that is always an opportunity for them to consider adjusting our rate. Now, again, that's important because that's how we borrow money. That, that's, that allows us to get better interest rates if we have very good bond ratings. But it doesn't prevent us from having debt or getting debt if we are downgraded. It just means we pay more, obviously, which isn't necessarily a good thing, but you can still have it, take advantage of the bond market with some downgrade in your bonds and your ratings. So I don't want it to be, the sky is falling. It's not a good thing to have your rates reduced.
Brian, was our rate changed after our last few meetings where we've talked about?
It was not. It remained the same bond rating.
And they understood that we were changing plans from what they've been?
Their challenge was, they were, they were under a time limit to be able to have to make that decision. They knew that you were going to be getting this information tonight, but they couldn't wait. Or otherwise, they would've waited to see what your decision is, and that could have very well played into their decision. But they understood that, number one, the board wanted to cut back your capital program. They understood that. They knew that you really aren't interested in a lot of extra debt. They understand that. And I think they took that into consideration when they made the decision to keep your rating where it is. Now, I can't say what S and P and Moody's will do. Their rating changes will come later. They may look at your decisions and they may think it's okay, or they may have a negative view of your decisions depending on what those are.
Well, I, I think that I can probably answer a lot of Commissioner Williams' questions with the next part of the motion, which I think I'll just change the motion to add that in. And that would be that we go ahead with the 12 Mile Creek Expansion and the Wingate to get those in and done before the time runs out for the ARPA funding.
Certainly.
And then make direct staff to come back at our next meeting with a board policy after it's been checked through legal and our bond council, that rather than revenue bonds, all future sewer, wastewater treatment plant expansions be voted on for a GO bond by the Union County taxpayers and voters.
Can I make sure I understand the motion?
Yes.
So for expansion?
For expansion. For 12 Mile Creek Expansion, after the nine million gallons per day, anything after that is voted on by the voters. Anything at the Crooked Creek, the Rocky River Subbasin would be voted on by the voters of Union County.
Okay. I'll make sure I understood the motion.
That gives the revenue bonds of time, you know, because three of us can vote on a revenue bond.
Certainly.
But 200 and some thousand people need to be making decisions, just like we do with school bonds. You know, we heard tonight, we've got less debt left on our school bonds than we're talking about putting into one sewer plant. You know, we've got, we paid down, I have 200 roughly, less than $300 million.
Yes, sir.
You know, we're talking about 300, maybe $75 million worth of revenue bonds to do that sewer plant. So we, we've taken that off the table until we could figure out what we wanted to do to pay for it. So I think the voters in the county need to be able to have that opportunity to say, and all the voters, not just the people who pay rates, but the people who have to live in the traffic, the people who have to fund the new schools, the people who have to do all the things that associated with that kind of growth. Now, that doesn't affect the City of Monroe, who has their own sewer and water.
Yes, sir.
We will still have economic development, development in the City of Monroe. We will still have economic development in the county with the expansion of 12 Mile from seven and a half million to nine million gallons a day. We still have opportunities for efficiencies in the system. But this gives an opportunity that if you come to us and say, commissioners, we need $100 million to expand sewer, that we can allow the citizens of this county, the voters of this county, to tell us if that's the direction they wanna go in. Election after election, they've told us, you know, listen, we wanna slow down, we wanna do what you're doing now. But each time one county commissioner or two county commissioners change their mind and decide they don't wanna do what they campaigned on. And, and the people are just tired of it. They're sick of it. So letting them have that vote, letting them pledge that money should make the bond agencies feel much better because we're all in agreement and no three commissioners can change it either. So you have, you have, if it's a 30% rate increase or 50% rate increase, it'll be on the ballot, just like we do with the school bonds. We tell the impact. We tell, we can tell the impact of housing. How many new houses is that expansion gonna build? And we can do those kind of things and inform the public. And the builders have a chance to go with them too. And, and I'll say this, I don't know that we'll need to do a lot of those things because, you know, we, you know, Scott Stone went out and got new people to come in and say, this is the who's who of the building community. And they said, hey, we want to work with you. We want to help you build these facilities that we need to build new homes. And, and our people that are in the county are just saying, please, give us, give us a break. I mean, give us a break on the rates and, and get us some help. And so the builders are offering help. We, we may not be able to do all this, but I think we can do a lot of this and we can expedite that 12 Mile Creek because we have to, we have to have it by 2026. If we don't, we could, the ARPA funding's in danger. So we have to have it and we have to get on it. The, the Wingate Water, the ability maybe to sell Monroe water to go into their facilities from the Yadkin Plant, that's revenue that could be coming in. There's a lot of revenue sources that we're not talking about tonight that we've thought about and we, we have discussed and have had concerns with and thought, you know, just like with the state, asking them for some more money. We've looked at other counties for solutions for Marshville and, and other areas in the county that could supply water to our residents in, in the far reaches of the county that we may not be able to serve for a very, very, very long time, if ever. So, so Commissioner, I understand your concerns and your thoughts, but everything that you're saying, we've, we've been addressing. And we've been, just that $300 million alone that the last board thought was a good idea, we just don't think that that's a good idea for right now. And it may be a good idea 20 years from now, it may be a good idea 15 years from now, maybe a good idea 50 years from now, if we're not getting a balloon dropping a nuke on us. So let's go forward with the 12 Mile Creek. Let's go forward with the Wingate Water, which, which is under a time constraint. Let's, let's get that approved tonight and move it forward like you asked. And then we'll, we'll relook at the Crooked Creek maybe next year, when we see how much money we have coming in from the state and other sources. And let's concentrate on the, what we have. And then let's look next year at that 12 Mile Creek Interceptor Line. And, or if we have extra money this year, maybe we can expedite that. But let's look at what we got first and what we have to do, let's concentrate on it and then move forward with whatever we need to do with, if it needs to be a 1% rate increase to maintain what we have. People just don't wanna pay for new houses. Nobody's out there saying, hey, give me, you know, $5,000 for my well and septic tank.
Certainly.
It ain't happening. And we're about to go into a well issue where we're doing, doing well filters that could be as much or more than the well and septic tank. So, you know, I, I would hope that my fellow commissioners would understand that and that the people of this county really need to be helping make these decisions because three people can commit a, a lot of money that you have to pay back. And, and I just don't think we need to do that. I, I really think we need to allow those voters to make those decisions and, and be a part of that.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Yeah.
So, you know, I made a number of recommendations and I know you talked about those two projects, but I need some clarification. Do those also include that we would follow the recommendations of, A, that we would continue existing projects in construction and design contracts and R and R, that we would board change its current reserve policy to reflect more of a 365-day reserve versus a, versus depreciation being added at, so that those dollars can then be used to, to funnel into the program? And then, as you said, we would use a mix of unassigned ARPA dollars and potential rate increase based on the information we bring back for you for the 12 Mile Creek Expansion.
And also that renewal and replacement, that, that, that as well, the renewal and replacement, which the voters, I mean, the rate payers are not upset with paying to fix their pipes.
That's correct. That does, that does help us.
Providing other people's pipes for new houses, that's what gives them heartburn.
Yes, sir. That does help us with the R and R program, yes, sir.
And the, so be the renewal and replacement, continue as is, which is being paid for by the rate payers. The 12 Mile wastewater expansion from seven and a half to nine, the Crooked Creek interceptor is not included in that right now.
Push that out, yes, sir.
But we relook at it when the state funding comes in.
Yes, sir.
And the Wingate Waterline, that's already paid for with the state ARPA funding.
And you're okay with us using depreciation dollars?
Yes.
Okay. I'll make sure that was clear.
And, and the reason I'm okay with it.
What we'll need to do is we'll actually need to amend your board policy. So we'll bring back to you a po, because your policy is, and that's what we follow. So we'll need to bring to you an amendment to the policy, so that we're not breaking your policy because we don't wanna do that. And as long as you understand that's what we're doing, that's our intention.
And the reason I'm okay with that is, is 20 years ago, almost, we had a, a board that voted to pay $25 million for land, for schools. And those lots sit vacant today because three people thought it was a good idea to do something that, that we didn't need at the time and we don't need today. And it was without the schools' input. It was just a, it was, they, it was buying votes. And, and so I'm fine with doing the reserves, I'm fine with going to other sources, I'm fine, I'm fine with reaching out to the legislature, which we did this morning, to look for those dollars. And anything that we can do to relieve the pressure on the rate payers for new growth is where we should be going with this.
I understand.
Any discussion on that motion?
I'd like to continue some discussion. First of all, Mr., Mr. Chairman, I just wanna make sure I understand the point you were making earlier correctly. You're recommending, you're suggesting that we issue general obligation bonds to fund the needs of the system instead of revenue bonds, is that right?
For, for new expansion of wastewater treatment.
Okay.
And that maybe, that was not for the seven and a half to nine, that was for nine and above. I wanna make sure you understood, nine and above.
Okay. For the growth in the system, general obligation bonds. So instead of having rate payers who are users of the system pay for these expansion projects.
No. No, I see where you're going.
No, no, no.
We're pledging the rates, he's talking.
Mr. Chairman, can I finish my, my point?
You can, but, but for the interest of the crowd, please.
No, it's, it's a legitimate point. You're, you're suggesting general obligation bonds, who, all taxpayers, general obligation bonds, as we know, are paid for by the taxpayers. So they're taxpayers in Monroe who use Monroe water and sewer, who will be paying for these capital projects. They're citizens in this county who aren't using Union County water or sewer, who will be paying for these capital projects if you issue general obligation bonds. So just so folks understand, so commissioners understand, if you issued, issue general obligation bonds for these expansion projects, that is who is paying the debt.
Mr. Manager, once again.
I wanna clarify, because I wanna make sure we're all on the same page.
Yeah, once again, would you repeat what you said earlier?
Yeah, I want, I want Beverly to maybe clarify that for me.
So, any general obligation bond that is approved by voters, you are backing that by your property tax rates, regardless of how it's paid back.
But, but we are pledging the rates.
However, however, your U.S. Bank Bond Trust Indenture for your system says that if you issue general obligation bonds for water and sewer projects, your rate payers will pay that back. And it's included in your debt service coverage ratios that you have to meet with the revenues collected from the system. So you will have voters in the City Monroe that are users of the City Monroe system voting on debt that they will never be responsible for paying back based on how our bond trust indenture is set up.
That's correct. Just as the citizens of Weddington voted to build Forest Hills High School, even though they don't have any children attending Forest Hills High School.
Right. But the way the general obligation state statute is written is, you have to cover it by your taxing authority.
Yes.
Are there ever any instances where there's a default on revenue bonds?
Nationwide, yes.
Sure, sure. I can think of a big one that happened in Jefferson County, Alabama. So where, where there's a default on revenue bonds, is the general taxing power of that authority then relied on to pay for it?
I believe the answer is yes. If you default and do not have enough rate payer's revenue to pay your general obligation bond debt, you will be required to use your taxing authority to pay that back because that is the asset backing general obligation bonds.
Okay, thank you.
So, so our voters should consider that before 200 and some thousand voters vote on it instead of three county commissioners. Thank you.
Yes, sir. I wanted to make that clarification. I, I thought that was right, but Beverly knows better than I do, so I'll just make sure everybody understood that. What other questions you have, sir?
No.
Okay. So, motion's there. Any more discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
No.
One, three, one.
All right. All right, that's all I had for that particular item. And obviously, we're going to have to bring some things back to you, policy change. We have to bring back to you the impact that StanTech shows on your rate model, so you can see that, how that works. And we'll have that available for you, hopefully, at the March 6 meeting. I'm not sure if we can turn it around that fast, but we're going to do our best to turn that around very quickly. All right, so I believe the next item was the heritage.
Next item was the adoption, let's see, of property acquisition policy.
In the interest of time, does the board want to put that on for another meeting, or do you want to do that now?
Put it on for another meeting. Everybody okay with that?
Okay.
Okay. We'll do that at a later meeting, ma'am. All right, so.
Wastewater pump station approval request for Heritage Marvin.
So there's a slideshow. So the board previously made a decision, and you set a policy that new pump stations that may be required for development will have to be approved by this board. In the past, the way pump stations were handled is that it was strictly within the staff purview. So if a developer came in, they needed to do a pump station, they would have to submit all the proper paperwork and design. We'd look at that, determine if that made any, if there was a way to do it from gravity that was a little easier, we might say, no, we're going to require you to do gravity. But if the pump station process could work, then the staff could approve the pump station and move through the process. Board had concerns about that, and I certainly understand that. You decided you wanted the ability to make those decisions. You also directed us to come up with, how do you evaluate that? Because just because a pump station comes to you doesn't mean that you know how you want to look at whether you should or should not approve that. So you had staff come up with some methodology for how we could evaluate pump stations. And so the board did adopt that methodology. It really considers the lifecycle cost of a pump station and the alternatives to a pump station. Sometimes a gravity solution is really not even an option. It's not even available. But sometimes a gravity solution can be available, it just may not be financially feasible. It may have some other impacts. You asked us to come up with some standard that the engineers and the developers could evaluate, provide that documentation to us. We would then look through that, make sure we felt that it was, you know, they met all the marks, that they hit all the requirements. And then we would bring that to the board for you to make a decision on whether you felt this was a pump station that met the benefits of the utility or did not meet the benefits of the utility. This is your very first one for you to deal with. It's called the Heritage Pump Station. And this is a project that's in Marvin. There were a number of projects that were previously denied by the board and basically put on hold until they could decide whether they wanted to submit and go through the process. Heritage was one of those. Their developers decided they would like to go through the process of having you evaluate it. So I just have some information for you on those ones. So just give you a general idea of the project. As you can see, that the Heritage subdivision is actually here in Marvin. There is a plan for a roundabout, I believe it's in this location here. And that is one of the things that I believe that the mayor was speaking on, is that NC DOT is looking at doing a road project. And this project would potentially impact that if they were to have that pump station located on their property. They need to be able to put in the lines and not impact that construction of that roundabout. So the property owner had agreed to dedicate the property and the right-of-way in order to serve that particular right-of-way, as well as be able to provide the pump station if that is approved to be built. And the Village of Marvin is supportive of that roundabout, as well as what they call their heritage district. This is a portion of their heritage district project. So fast forward, developers submitted their proper paperwork for this. I believe this is somewhere in the neighborhood of, the original property was 47 acres, and I'll show you some more details on that. So that area in red that you see, which is outlined, this is the area that could be served by the pump station. As you can see, the residential proposed development makes up a large chunk of that particular service area, but you can potentially serve some area outside of that boundary. It's roughly about 19 acres, not quite 20 acres, that could be served by this pump station. Pump station is actually potentially planned to be in this location here. So you would be able to, number one, serve the project, which is 68 lots. And you could potentially serve future development on the additional 19-plus acres, which would flow essentially to this pump station and then be pumped over to the appropriate wastewater treatment plant. The staff, hold on, let me get my notes. I'm sorry, I apologize, but I have a minute. So you received at your chairs some options for if you wanted to approve the project or if you felt like the utility, this was not a good use of the utility's dollars. If you were to choose that you think that the wastewater treatment pump station for this particular project is beneficial, there are some things that we say that you could use in that rationale, and I'll go over those. So, number one, if the pump station solution is used, there should be no need for acquisition of easements for a gravity solution. In order to serve this project, you would actually have to, actually, by gravity, you'd have to flow all the way to this Broadmoor project. So you'd have to acquire easements in order to be able to get to this Broadmoor project, connect to that pump station, and then flow to the 12 Mile Creek plant. That would require going through an existing neighborhood and additional easements. So if you felt that this was a project you would like to approve, we wouldn't have to go through that easement acquisition. You would not be impacting those property owners by putting in the gravity line. That would be a benefit if you wanted to look at it that way. Also, the pump station solution.
Brian, look quick. Who pays for those easement acquisitions?
That's a good question. So generally, we put that, they put that cost on the developer. Now, understand that there are situations where property owners will refuse to provide that. And then the development community will come to us and ask for you to use your condemnation powers in order to acquire that property. And that's not uncommon.
And who pays for that?
Essentially, that comes out of our dollars at that point in time.
And we don't get reimbursed for it?
I think you can get reimbursed for a portion of that.
Brian?
Yeah.
The developer is responsible for reimbursing, we counted for all costs associated with that action.
Very good.
Come up to the microphone.
All costs. Sorry, thank you. Thank you, John. I appreciate that.
We don't want to leave you out, John. You're sitting here all night, basically.
I'm not.
I certainly appreciate that. No, any offsite easement acquisition that's required to support a project is at the cost of the developer. Should they approach the county for assistance through the eminent domain process, they would be responsible for reimbursing us all costs associated.
So if we condemn it?
If we condemn.
And it goes through a court case, and a jury finds that that easement's worth a billion dollars because it goes through a gold vein, then the developer has to pay whatever it is that the jury decides.
That is the way our acquisition policy is written.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, John. That's why the experts are here. All right, so, again, the pump station will allow for additional connections, as I pointed out previously. The positive is it actually provides for more than just the development itself, so that is a positive. And then the other part of it is, our water and wastewater master plan does not address providing sewer in this area. We didn't anticipate that we would be providing sewer in this area. So by default, property owners that are looking to potentially develop their properties really only have a solution of looking at pump stations. We didn't evaluate it from a regional perspective. There are oftentimes where we look at a service area and we evaluate it for our own purposes for a regional solution. This is not one of those. So understand the property owner, they're following essentially our master plan, which gives them no other real option at that point in time. Now, if the board were to say, we don't feel like this is an appropriate project for the utility, there's some rationale you can use for that as well. The future operational and maintenance costs, they are actually higher. So when you own a pump station, we're going to have to pay for the electricity, we're going to have to pay for the maintenance, we're going to have to pay for those things over time. And you have those costs, and I'm not going to say in perpetuity, but for a long time. And the reason why I say a long time is, we didn't have a solution for gravity sewer in this area in our master plan. So it would be a long time that we would be operating and maintaining that pump station. The other part of it is, there is, there are, again, there's no CIP project for this particular one, and that's a negative as well. We didn't identify that this should be served. So again, that's, the board can look at that. We didn't identify it should be served, therefore, we don't wish to serve that. The second one is, we didn't dev elevate this area for a, from a regional perspective. We just looked at this as, this was not, and again, an area we intended on serving. So those are all items that you could use if you wish to say you feel that this is not the appropriate solution for this. I gave you some suggestions for if you wish to approve this particular pump station. It is the pleasure of the board at this point in time. And I can answer any questions that you might have.
Do I have any questions?
Yeah, I've got some questions. Brian, I don't know if you can answer this, or perhaps somebody else in the room. We typically use the accepted value of 280 gallons per day for a typical residence, correct?
Yes, sir.
Now, this project's based off of 190 gallons per day. Why is that? Can someone answer that question?
How many bedrooms?
They may be smaller units, I'm not sure, to be honest with you.
Yeah, the 280 gallons is based on four bedroom.
It's based on a four bedroom, yes, sir.
Okay. There was something that was also included in the information that we received regarding this project. And what it was, it was a letter dated December 16, 2022, from Scott Thompson. Scott Thompson recommended a field verification of calculated capacities based on Manning's formula. Has any kind of field verification been performed on this project?
That would be not to my knowledge, no, sir.
Okay. Thank you. One last question, more of a concern, I guess. What is the current anticipated impact on our school system?
Let's see. So this would actually have been through the Village of Marvin. I'm not sure that we have that particular information, because we don't do the land use section of that. That is through the village, is 68 homes. I don't know the answer to that, to be honest with you. We can certainly get that, bring that back to you if you like.
Thank you. Yeah, the numbers I've got in front of me is that the affected middle and high schools, so we're talking about Marvin Ridge Middle and also Marvin Ridge High, these schools currently sit at 101% rated capacity for middle school, and then the high school sits at 110% rated capacity. That's not including the elementary school, which is also over capacity there.
Certainly.
Okay. Thank you, Brian.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions, or anybody want to make a motion?
I would like to make a motion to deny the application request concerning Heritage Marvin Development for a wastewater pump station. As such, pump station solution is set forth in the application associated with the request in accordance with Section 34-3, 36B1 of the Union County Code, and secondly, adopt the utility-based rationale statement for denial.
Any discussion on the motion? Yeah, I'd just say, you know, we've already seen how many commitments we have and the uncertainties that we have with water and sewer right now.
Certainly.
And that I'd be supporting the motion. The pump stations used to be very rare, and we voted against five just toward the end of last year. And, well, we voted against four out of five.
Yes, sir.
The one for the town of Waxahaw actually doesn't need to be done because the schools granted an easement so that they could flow gravity, which they could have flowed gravity anyways. But the schools had an easement issue, and thank you to the Board of Education for approving that.
Certainly.
And they saved themselves a couple hundred thousand, us a lot, in future costs.
Yes, sir.
So I will be voting in support of the motion. Any other discussion? All those in favor of denying the pump station, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Next, we have appointments to boards and committees. Yes, let's take a five-minute break, and everybody time to stretch, go to the restroom, and then we'll start back at, let's take, we'll start back at 8:30. How many minutes that is?
8:30? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, do we need a motion?
I think I can call it for, yeah, I just call it for recess.
Also, Mr. Chairman, we still have the adopted property acquisition policy.
Yes, we have a couple more.
Thank you so much. God bless you.
Yeah. It's, it's.
Did we move that? The next, to our next.
Oh, we did? I think that's what.
Okay.
Reconvene the meeting. And next, we'll do appointments to boards and committees. We have a appointment for two members to the Board of Equalization and Review from the applications received. Does the terms of Dutch Harson and Mark Ashcroft, the Board of Equalization and Review, expire February of 2023? Both, Mr. Harson and Mr. Ashcroft have applied for this point. No other applications have been received. Anybody like to make a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to reappoint Dutch Harson and Mark Ashcroft to the Board of Equalization and Review.
All right. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
For, okay. We have item 23063 from the consent agenda. Commissioner Helms, Brian Helms?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, so I asked for this item to be pulled for discussion. I've got some questions, and I see that Mr. Joyner's here. Thank you, Mr. Joyner. But I've got some questions regarding the program. So, to be clear, I mean, I think that tuberculosis control is very important in our county. And so I'm not necessarily against combating the disease. However, seems as though every time we accept state or federal dollars, there's always some strings attached. So I, I wanted to sort of explore this. I was hoping maybe that you could provide some information regarding the program, because as I understand it, the program that would be providing this funding is a program called Uniting for Ukraine. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
And, and, so I've got some questions, but, but I was hoping maybe you could let us know a little bit about the, the program itself. It seems as though it's been something that we've had for some time. However, I'm unfamiliar with it. So could you give us some info, information?
Yeah, I'll be, be happy to give you what I know about it. It is a part of the U.S. Department of Homeland Security's effort to assist Ukrainian citizens and their immediate families with their temporary relocation into the U.S. That program also has some specific requirements. One of them is a testation of some health screenings, and one of those is TB screening and evaluation. And so the state, the, the funding has come from the feds to the state, and then the state is sharing those resources with local health departments across North Carolina to assist, because they realize that this does add some additional demands locally. And so as part of a way to support what that program is doing, they are making those resources available. We received a little over 10,000 back in October, November for this particular program, and this is another second pot of money for the same program.
Okay. Thank you. And so far, how many folks have we served through this program? I believe the information we have is 226.
Yeah, we've served 226.
And this is strictly for tuberculosis, then? Is that correct?
Yes, it's tuberculosis evaluation, folks who are seeking, being referred, or they're needing to get this information for their U4U program requirement.
And this is just Union County numbers? Is that also?
That is correct.
Okay. So the, the folks that we've treated in the past, are they still located in Union County? Have they moved on throughout the length of this program? Do we have any, any information about that?
I'm, I'm not totally sure if they have moved on. I know it's part of, they're part of a, of a program where they are sort of resettled. They may be with family members, or friends, or someone. There, it's part of a program in terms of where they're, how they're sort of settled out during this temporary parole status. But I'm not sure how long some have been here.
So in, in the information that we received, one thing stuck out to me was, they said that, according to the agreement with the federal government, with the Department of Homeland Security, so if we accept these funds, we're expected to receive Ukrainian parolees coming in specifically for this program. How do we define receive? What exactly are we doing here, and what's the county's obligation?
Yeah. Well, the only obligation that, that, that I'm aware of, that we need to do, is to assure from a health standpoint that they've adequately received the, the TB testing. The process in terms of receiving into the U.S. as part of the overall Uniting for Ukraine program through the Homeland Security program, I'm not exactly sure what receive, the definition is for that. So I, I'm sorry, I can't be more specific with your answer.
No, no, I guess what I'm looking for is, is, I mean, you know, if we're receiving these folks in, you know, obviously, we're going to be required to, to treat them for certain communicable diseases. But I guess I'm, what I'm questioning is, is what's our end of the bargain? You know, are, is the federal government providing housing for these folks? Is that, what, what obligation we have? And that's kind of what I want to know, is, is to what extent we're on the hook, you know, for this funding?
Yeah.
Do you have any idea, Mr. Joyner, about how long this program continues? Is there like a set date of termination here, or is it just open ended at this, at this point?
From my understanding is, I'm not aware of what the timeframe is. I know it's, the indications are that it's a, it's for a temporary two-year parolee status from the time an individual would be coming into the U.S. So, and the point at which they meet that requirement, what that means in terms of leaving, or, I'm not aware.
Is, is this time sensitive? I mean, it's like, if we didn't vote on it tonight, we, you brought some information that he's looking for at the next meeting. Would that be?
Yeah, I mean, it, I mean, these, these, these funds are, you know, these, these are being made available by, as I said, by the state through the federal channels to assist in the process. So we're going to, you know, we're going to need to assure that folks that are coming in here that may be, you know, infectious. I mean, TB is not something that we see a lot of in the U.S., but in a lot of other countries, there is a, a higher incidence. There's also, so there's a reason for us to sort of be involved in making sure that that's done. So we're going to be doing that. But as it relates to accepting these funds, I mean, it could be delayed. There's no reason for it having to be tonight.
Yeah.
I mean, we're needing, we're, we're going to be needing to provide that service anyway.
Because what I see from his point is, at first glance, it's a, it's not an unfunded mandate. It's a, they're not passing that cost to us, they're, they're reimbursing us for the cost of doing that. But are they reimbursing us or paying the cost of students in the school? Are those Ukrainian students going to Union County Public School for two years? Are we giving them any other social services that the Union County taxpayers may be voting for? By accepting this money, does it require that we pay more money? And that's kind of, I think, is that kind of where you're going with this, Brian? Is it costing us?
Exactly, yes.
I mean, do we take 20,000 and spend 100,000?
Mr. Chairman, if I, if I might, I think that those questions, we'll, we can, we'll be happy to get answers for. I think they're actually bigger than what Dennis is responsible for in terms of public health. Some of you may remember, we actually had some, the settlement agencies came here a few years ago and talked to the board about refugee status. And we do see refugees from many parts of the world, here in North Carolina, and particularly in Union County. And so we can refresh that and bring it back. I think it'll answer some of the questions that you have. And as Dennis said, I think the timing of accepting this money, we can delay that, that's fine. He is going to continue to provide the public health service that's needed for potential TB patients. But this is just a financial.
One other thought is, you know, we're, we're taking in not only people from there, we've taken in people in the past from Syria.
Absolutely.
We've taken in people from countries all over the world, and, and right now, we're taking in undocumented people from Guatemala, from Mexico, from South America, from Cuba, from all kinds of places, that we're taking in people. If the federal government's going to pay for the Ukrainians, I would like, you know, if we're, we should be giving them TB tests as well. Maybe the federal government could come up with some money to help with that as well. Are we giving TB testing to illegal immigrants, or?
Well, we encourage TB testing for anyone who's, who's coming in, particularly for folks who are coming in from other countries. So to the extent that we're able to do that, that's part of our TB program.
Okay. And, and like I said, that, I, I understand what she's saying, and that's why the time sensitivity question is, it may, is probably going to take more input than just yours. If, if y'all could do that, that would be fantastic.
Yes, we'll be happy to.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Anybody else have anything to say on that issue? Okay. Next, we have the budget. Michelle, you know, we go back to the budget. Now, this will be the last item, correct?
Yes. We moved that on our items.
Okay, okay.
And this is not an incredibly long presentation, but we can take all the time that you need. So this is really a, a presentation that has kind of three purposes behind it. One is to provide you with where we are financially mid-year, so looking at revenues and expenses at the mid-year mark, and really talking to you about how we set our manager's recommended budget kind of base as we start working through the budget process. Additionally, you'll remember that, I think it was in December, you provided direction for a bifurcated tax rate, so this is going to give you that information and what we have, what we're proposing for that bifurcated rate, and also direction for a flat tax rate. So that will answer that question as well. So I tried to break this down in a, in a simple way, and then on the next slide, you'll see a little more detail. But essentially, at the mid-year point, when we're looking at our year-end projections, you can see our revenue projected and our expenses projected, and that we're about 1.5 million revenue over expenses in terms of projections. Now, we will, at this point of the year, start looking at this on a very regular basis. We will update these numbers monthly, so that you see where, where we're landing. And again, this, so this sheet gives you all the detail that really builds up to that more simplistic view that you saw on the first sheet. We, as I just said, we have anticipated probably 1.5 million in revenues over at this point. We also are not needing to draw down fund balance that we had anticipated if our revenue and expenses stay in that same trajectory. And so in one of our future meetings in March, where we talk about more budget detail and capital, we'll be bringing forward some recommendations for you in more detail on that fund balance that's available for one-time use. So any questions on revenue and expenses? We're, we're in a good spot right now. So the next, the next slide here is about our sales tax, and there's been some questions about sales tax, I think specifically about how we make our estimates and how accurate we are at times on our estimates. So we've gone back to FY 2018, and you can see from this chart kind of where we collected, and if we were over in terms of our actual collected over what we had adopted as a budget. And frankly, when you look at this, it, really, the last couple of years have been where we have really seen some pretty significant increases, and this is where the state of North Carolina is in the same, in the same spot. We're starting to see that soften a bit. You heard that conversation a little bit this morning with the delegation, but we're still coming in over budget. We're getting better at it, but as you can see, in 18, 19, and 20, we were actually below our estimates. So we're still, you know, really honing in on trying to, to get that more accurate, although, you know, we're going to continue to be conservative in those numbers when we build our budget. So for FY 24, we are building in a 3% increase over what we anticipate actually collecting at about $73 million. And then this gives you just a little different view of that same information.
Still good news.
Still good news, exactly.
No news like good news.
Now, this is the bifurcated rate that we have, have put together, that we are recommending using. And you can do, you could, can put this together in some different ways, so I'm going to give you a couple of options. But you see at the top, the current tax rate of 58.8 cents and how that's broken out. What we've tried to do is really take a very transparent approach, where you can combine UCPS and SPCC for education total if you wanted to, or we can leave those separate. And the other thing that we've done that's a little different than a few years ago, when there's, was a bifurcated rate, I wasn't here when that was set, but the way I understand it, it did not align all sales tax with the tax rates. So there are articles of sales tax that are supposed to be used for school construction and debt. So there's portions of half cents that have to be used that way. So we, you'll see it in the next slide, we are recommending using some sales tax towards the school's tax rate, as well as the county tax rate. And, and these are really the numbers that, that fall out when you look at where we are today. And this gives you that in a little more detail. It shows you that sales tax that we would be allocating toward UCPS debt. And so this also gives you basically the mathematics of, again, I want to, to remind you that we're going to continue to, to strengthen these numbers month over month, but if we did this today, that what, with a flat tax rate, UCPS would be looking at about 4.2 million more in, in the estimated revenue they would receive. So I'm going to go back to this view.
In the county?
Yes, sir.
In the county, how much would we be receiving?
For sales tax?
Oh, you're talking about just, just sales tax?
That's just sales tax, because that's a, that's a different, a different approach than, than had been used previously.
So that, just, so before, we were not given?
No sales tax was allocated.
So we'd be giving them four, I mean, 4.1?
Four, no, it's 4.2 million more over their current property tax value. So the value of the penny changes.
Right.
So you're seeing that. But we would also be allocating a little more than $24 million in sales tax to essentially offset the property tax pennies that would be needed for debt. So it's about 30% of our sales tax dollars. So essentially, what you're looking at, again, looking at the current tax rate of 58.8, is a UCPS rate of 39.35, that is 36.11 for operating, which also, that includes their operating capital, as well as the charter school funds that are passed through, and then UCPS debt at 3.24 cents, so 39.35. SPCC just happens to be that there's, are the same, .97 and .97 for 1.94, or an education total of 41.29 of the 58.8 county operating. County operating would be 16.67 pennies. County debt, .45. And then, based on previous board action, we have an economic development fund that sits at .39 cents that builds for funds to be used for economic development projects, or 17.51 for county total. Any questions on that?
No questions.
So, we plan on sharing this with UCPS and SPCC as well as others who are interested in what this looks like. I would ask if there's a preference for UCPS alone in the bifurcated rate or an education comp combo? I'm not sure how the board feels about that.
There's a couple of different thoughts to it, that what we used to call the true-up or the money difference in the growth. So, if we saw penny value go higher than what's projected, they would get those pennies as well. The school system, in a bifurcation, everybody would still get their share of that?
Yes, if that's what, I mean, I think that we would plan to do that as long as there's growth and whatever we brought in, you know, we would, we would have to come up with a, a methodology to do that.
So, I think definitely, whatever we decide, it needs to be listed on the tax bill.
Correct.
As SPCC, and then UCPS, charter schools, whatever, whoever gets money out of that pie needs to be identified and given credit for it. And then, the SPCC, if we did separate it for whatever reason, we would need to show that, again, same thing, that the SPCC gets theirs. How, how do you all feel about that? No, noncommittal. Come on. Is that a, is everybody okay with that, or? Unless you're probably closest to this, just coming off the school board. How do you feel?
Being able to receive the truer funds allows them to plan ahead for their capital improvement projects, you know, one-time projects. So, you know, so that's something that definitely would help the schools in their planning before the kids get out of school for the summer so that they can get the ball rolling on these projects. I just have one legal question. So, I, I don't know if you would be able to help me with this or not. Does it have to say UCPS operating in debt or?
No, it, no, and it could say anything. I mean, there, so there is only one tax rate. When we turn this into the state, we're only going to turn in whatever that total is. This is really for our purposes.
Okay.
For billing and, and informational purposes. So, if you have words that you all would rather see there, I don't feel wedded in these at all.
I mean, pers, just personally, I would like to see UCPS and, and charters, plus charters.
Would you want SPCC included in that too? Because for education, it's a, the bifurcation, meaning two tax rates, I guess, like, we started out bifurcation, then it went up to trifurcation and qualification and everything else. And, and every piece of that got their, was supposed to get their true-up or whatever, you know, they were supposed to get their piece of the growth that was not expected. But if education gets that piece, if they're all included together, all education still gets that piece, whether SPCC gets it or?
Right. We would just do the mathematics to allocate whatever, whatever there was.
So, what you're saying is if, whether there's four lines or one?
Yeah.
We're still dividing that up?
Yeah. By keeping it all together, I mean, people understand that you're spending on?
Operating in debt, so there'd be two lines.
Well, no, it would, so you have an education line and a county line. And county would include sheriff's department.
Mm-hmm.
You know, debt that we're, that we have, the things that we spend money on. And the education line would include SPCC, charter schools, and UCPS.
Yes.
Correct?
Mm-hmm.
Without splitting up operating and debt?
We would for our information, but not for a tax bill. You start splitting it up too much on tax bill, and it just gets back to being confusing.
What I would say is, what we put on the bill is one thing we can, and we have done this the last few years, we can put inserts in the tax bill we have with, you know, more information so that folks who want to know kind of what builds up to what, we can break that down in, in all those different ways.
The, the problem that we've seen in the past was like with the fire tax. So, if you have a district and all, all the fire departments have a fire tax now, so they would get their fire tax bill that they had in the town for maybe five or six cents. And then, the people would also get a Union County fire tax of a penny and a half or, or whatever it was that year. So, the people would say, well, why am I paying two fire taxes? Why, why does that, I don't want to pay two fire taxes, I want to pay one. And they didn't understand that that's where that money was going. So, it got confusing to people, and the fire departments were catching a lot of the grief because of it. So, by rolling them into the county, operating costs with CEM, EMS and everything, the sheriff's department, and then doing it on a separate paper, when you get your tax bill and it shows that you, and I don't see the percentages here, but let's say 62% for education and 38% for county government, that's the main thing, that people understand that we are funding education and that the county government is taking less of a bite of that. And then, you can have, like you said, you can have a more in-depth pie chart or breakdown inside of it. But, you know, when, when a guy says, I got a $100 pickup truck, I'm paying $62 for education, and I'm, and, but it's going to SPCC, which I gra, you know, because I graduated from SPCC, my kids are going to SPCC, you know, Union County Public Schools, they're all blended together. So, it's not like, well, why SPCC can only spend $2 and the schools spend $60 of my $100 truck payment? So, so again, you're, you're putting it all together as education, because that's what it is. I mean, it's charter schools, UCPS, and SPCC. So, nobody gets a, nobody's playing each other off each other, just like sheriff's department's not really played off the fire departments. And, and I think that, that's just an easier, with the more in-depth insert in there.
I've always felt like education is fine with a simple asterisk or footnote that says education includes SPCC, charters, and UCPS.
Got it. Okay. Thank you. Mm-hmm, thank you. And then, last thing, and I will work with Lynn tomorrow to start kind of polling you on this, but we would like to have budget workshops. We've done this the last few years. We've done them different and for different purposes each of the last few years. This year, what we're proposing is really doing more topic-specific items. There's a couple that I actually have added since I did this, revaluation and solid waste, and these dates may, may or may not, we may move the topics around some according to what works. But what we would like to do is either have these start before a regular board meeting, so probably 3 o'clock on the regular board meeting days, or on the Mondays when we don't have board meetings at the regular meeting time of 5 o'clock. So, we'll, we'll do some polling and see what works. But this will just give you some more in-depth information on things that we think are kind of hot topics for this budget year. Also, if there are topics that you would like to hear about that aren't on here, if you'd let us know, we'd be happy to give more in-depth information on those as well. So, that's what we plan for our future meetings. As I mentioned, we will share the UCPS/SPCC information on the rate with them, and that you all have seen it. So, we'll be working with them. And as we refine these numbers, you will see the, the revenue and expense numbers get a little more refined as we go through, and we'll give you those updates on a regular basis as well. So, I'm happy to answer any more questions, if there are any.
Any questions?
Not, that's all I have.
Along, along the same thought with the workshops, just making sure that we communicate with the schools to start talking to them with their agent, the next few months with their budgets, and making sure we have at least two joint meetings.
Yes, ma'am. We, we have had one staff-to-staff meeting. We were going to have another one after this meeting, and we had already talked about figuring out a time that works, but we will make sure we get those scheduled.
And I would like to recognize, you sat patiently back there with all the staff and Ed, and we have Kathy Hightell in the crowd tonight, chair, board chair of the BOE. She don't like to be called out, but thank you for standing, and, and thank you for participating tonight.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Michelle.
Okay. County managers' comments. And before you say no comments, I might would like you to, we didn't cover it tonight, but the, one of the proposals on the petition that was presented was about going to Mecklenburg County with some of our sewer capacity. Yes, if you wouldn't mind, just a quick estimate of that.
Sure, sure. And thank you, Chairman. I actually did have a couple of comments. So, I knew there were a couple of items that were brought up at public comment, and, and I want some clarification, I want to give you some clarification. So, currently, we actually have a contract with Charlotte where we could send up to 3 million gallons worth of flow per day to Charlotte for them to treat. I, I want to make sure that the board actually understands that there are other costs that we pay them that are not necessarily shown in that treatment cost. We pay a capital cost, and that usually runs between $300,000 and $400,000 annually. We also pay for surcharges. So, Charlotte treats us as an industrial user. They can do that, that's their system. They charge us an additional amount of surcharge for every gallon of flow that we send, and we budget about $750,000 for that annually. The more flow we send, the more that surcharge will be. I'm not saying those aren't options, but obviously, there are other costs that we have to deal with. The other thing that I want to clarify is, while we have a diversion line that we can send flow from our 12 Mile Creek plant, we can't guarantee at this point in time that we could send the full 3 million gallons to Charlotte in their system. We have done some evaluations and worked with the city of Charlotte on that, on that matter. They've been very clear that they don't have the ability to, to increase our capacity. So, they don't see the ability to, if we wanted to go from three to four or five, they don't have that ability. They say they can serve us from a treatment perspective, but what there may be a problem is, is the actual line size is to get 3 million gallons all the way to their treatment plant. And we don't know the answer to that. So, there could be some capital cost. If we said, we want to send all 3 million gallons to your plant, we might have to see that there's some additional capital cost. We don't know the answer to that. We can obviously send flow and have been sending flow in our diversion line, and, and that is an, an option. But I also want the public and the board to, to understand that when you divert flow, you're not increasing capacity. We wouldn't go from 7.5 to 9 million, that's not how that works. We're actually reducing the amount of flow in 12 Mile. So, what that does is our actual flows would go down, and then that would certainly gain you some potential capacity in that plant because your actual flows are going down. But you don't realize those actual flows right away because we do a 12-month rolling average. So, it takes months before you realize any potential capacity savings from that. So, while it is an option, and there are things we can do with it, we treat that more as an emergency valve. We use that for peak flows and weather flows. We don't use it as a capacity flow. Now, if the board said, we want you to do that for a temporary period while maybe we're going through the expansion process for 12 Mile Creek, because that is a two- to three-year construction timeframe. If we got to a point where our, our, our treatment plant was so close and we couldn't really permit anything, we could look at tweaking out some additional capacity by lowering those flows. But again, you don't realize them right away. It's over that 12-month period. So, we would always recommend we use it as a temporary solution, not as a permanent capacity solution. Does that answer your question, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Other comments? I just wanted to say, number one, I appreciate the board's patience and your interest in the, the topic on the water and sewer needs. And that's a lot of information for you to get in one night, and I appreciate that you took that time. I also want to say thank you to all the staff. They put a lot of time and effort, they're not here, they left, but they put a lot of time and effort into putting that together for me. And I tell them that they're the workhorses, I'm the mouthpiece, and that's fine, I like it that way. But they do a really good job, and I wanted to say thank you for all the work that they did on that. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Commissioner David Williams?
No comments, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Brian Helms?
Yeah, I'll just say briefly that I appreciate all the folks that attended tonight's meeting, that were here earlier, and obviously, the ones that have remained. Mr. Joyner, I appreciate your comments regarding the, the funding request for, for tuberculosis. I appreciate you sticking around for that. Again, to all those that spoke today, you know, hey, I understand that it takes courage to, to approach that podium. I would just say this, that silent voice is never heard, and I'm glad to see the participation from the, the citizens and the residents of Union County. And something we really didn't talk a lot about tonight was the, the Wingate Farm Lease, and that was on our consent agenda. And I was actually very glad to see that come back up. I was glad to see that it was approved through consent. You know, the, the seal back behind us is very telling of Union County's roots. So, the seal actually includes agriculture and education seal. And, and again, this is something that's very important to Union County. And so, I, I'm very optimistic about the Wingate Farm Lease. I think that it could be a very outstanding program, and I'm, I'm anxious to see it started. As far as the county line resolution, I'm glad that, that we've got some, some direction there. I'm glad to see that my fellow commissioners have adopted that resolution. I've been on record for saying that I believe that Union County families should stay in Union County. This is a very sensitive issue that could affect a lot of different families within our communities, and I'm glad to see that resolution pass. With that, I'll say thank you and good night.
Vice Chair Melissa Merrill? I'll be brief, but there, there was something done tonight that can really have an effect on the say that Union County citizens have with the direction of growth in Union County. The use of GO bonds voted on by the taxpayers and the citizens of Union County. We're, we're all affected by growth and growth decisions. And in order to get that high density of growth, you have to have the sewer capacity. The fact that Monroe won't be affected, the, the fact that we still will have growth in the county is unavoidable. We have growth because we're in high demand. We're in high demand because of our school system, because of our sheriff's department, because of the jobs and the economy that we have here, the low tax rate. Everything that we do right draws people here. It can't be avoided. But at least now, you as taxpayers and citizens of this county will have input, not just at an election every two years, but you'll have direct input on the election to borrow that money or not. We still have money coming in, we, that department brings in about $73 million a year now. But as far as if you want to say, if you truly have concerns about growth in the county, whether you live in the far reaches of New Salem, or you live right in downtown Marvin, or what was going to be downtown Marvin, you, you have a say in it now. And, and it's a board policy, and as we know, board policies can be changed, but you at least don't have a lame duck board just going out and saying, we're going to make a commitment to all these ratepayers and the future boards of county commissioners, that they have to do this without the people that are paying the bills have that say. So, thank you so much for tonight. Thank the staff again for the late hour, you know, I apologize for that. At least it's not midnight, but it's, uh, thank you all for your time, and thank all the people for staying so long for all the presentations. With that, I'll make a motion to adjourn. All those in favor say aye. Aye. None opposed.
I think the media people left.